Good morning. We will call this meeting to order. The Connecticut State Board of Education. It is Monday, May 4th. A little after nine thirty, so we'll go ahead and Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday. Wednesday, May 4th. Couple minutes after nine thirty, so I think we can go ahead and begin. Good to see you all here. I think our flag has disappeared, but that's okay. We still know how to say the pledge.
Bring it in now.
Oh, it's coming? There, we got a flag. Orient this way. Thank you so much. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Back and you shall return. So, we will begin with public participation. As always, we ask that you keep your public participation to three minutes. If you start to go beyond that, I will give you a gentle nudge that you are going beyond three minutes, but that allows us to hear from all. So who do we have? Tom Freybell?
Tom Freybell, Manchester, Connecticut. Right name. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Voice Walton and I saw her in a TV program caught by a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago, in the Royal Holiday in the first segment, that program, Manchester, Connecticut, represented by our company, very good episode, quite series, regular series, ninety twenty five, called Where We Live, so very well done. And she's from the three eight economy. BBC, not just radio, but they put out magazines for years, and I think in most recent edition, we thought about Mary Seacole, sort of mixed Ray C with a nurse during the Korean War, and he thinks a newspaper about her, and he sort of features Bob Zepollian and Winston Churchill in nineteen forty two, when things weren't going well for Great Britain during that conference. Two teams coming up, it's going to be a national celebration on the twentieth of the nineteenth, and if the children spoke, they just came out, all the two teams, and it's very well illustrated, the doors into Texas in eighteen sixty five, and yeah, according to some, too, not somebody in slavery, still award, but still celebrate down there as a national holiday. And over the thirty second year anniversary of the disability act signed by George, President George, or John Bush, and both that came out in the last year, called this, this applying disability, what to know, what to say, how to be an ally, like Emily, like all, like she's weird. Wouldn't share, but just giving advice of not making fun of them, or saying things they can be, either insulting or patronizing, and she brings it down, and she calls it a word, equalism, discrimination against people that have disabilities. May twenty third, having a presentation by Dr. Diane Kearney, she's our adult education in Manchester, I'm glad they sent an invite to any board members or even from the central office to come on, we self fund our adult education system, and we put out two bulletins for years, the spring, summer bulletin for education, whether it be credit or non-credit, and she's very good. And early education week on May ninth, which will be next on Monday, at the late September, seven o'clock, in Manchester. A systemic racism does exist in sight, and I will criticize out there, because both agents came out, visual history of impact and racism in America by Dr. Maya Tilbury, ADHD, and when I said it would happen over the weekend between color, light lives matter and the neo-Nazi group, and different things on the radio today, including Governor Carlson and the New York Times, who put that race and sexist views on the national office channel, and it goes to show you that some things change, some things don't need to stay, you say what you want to, but I feel like you can say that any type of racism, any type of slurs that's spoken, regardless of where everybody comes from, and it will stand up for any type of injustice, to be pointed there or not, and you all need to be positive in that, actually, moving on to the King words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment. And that, that is today, that ends our public comment, so thank you, thank you very much. With, with the board's indulgence, I'd like to move item seven D up at this point, in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'd like to invite to the, to our, our table here, President of CEA, Kate Diaz, if you'll join us, the President of AST, Connecticut, Jan, Jan Hoppert, and our Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty two, Connecticut Teacher of the Year, Kim King, coming to us from Mansfield Public Schools. Please join us at the table. We, we could not let Teacher Appreciation Week go by without an opportunity to recognize the work of educators across our state, and you all as representatives of the very best of what happens in our classrooms and the work that you do for our, for our students. We have a couple of formalities we want to, to present you with, and then offer you an opportunity to, to say a few words, and of course, you must capture some photos before you leave. First, let me meet on behalf of the Connecticut State Board of Education, proposed on May fourth, twenty twenty two, whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is celebrated annually during the first week of May, and whereas teachers continue to go above and beyond during the pandemic to ensure continuity of education for their students, in addition to keeping students engaged and connected to their school communities, and whereas teachers work to provide a safe, nurturing educational environment that ensures the best possible outcome for all students, and whereas teachers take pride in their profession and are dedicated to supporting their students, families, and school communities, and whereas teachers continue to both lead and utilize professional learning to stay current with effective strategies to meet the needs of students. Now therefore be resolved that the Connecticut State Board of Education extends its gratitude and appreciation to all Connecticut teachers for their dedication and service to the students and families of the state of Connecticut, and that is approved unanimously this fourth day of May by the Connecticut State Board of Education, and signed by myself and our Commissioner, Charlene Russell Tucker. So, don't, don't go away, we've got more. Vice Chair Benham?
Yes. This is an official statement from Governor Ned Lamont. Whereas through the dedicated efforts to ensure our children learn the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in college, careers, and life, Connecticut teachers are vital in building the future. And whereas, because of the pandemic and imposing education requirements, teachers must be constantly learning so that they may adapt to meet the ever-changing needs of young people in our schools. And whereas, teachers play an essential role in shaping our children into conscientious, engaged, and civically-minded adults, supporting and triggering the teaching lessons that have an impact on students, which they will carry through life. And whereas, the teaching profession benefits from educators who have the power to lead within and beyond the classroom, allowing them to prepare young people to become contributing members of our community, therefore strengthening our democracy. And whereas, there are thousands of dedicated educators working in Connecticut schools, putting in countless hours and extra effort to help students achieve, thusly preparing them for further education, for workforce, and their civic duties. And whereas, all teachers are sincerely valued and appreciated, now therefore, I, Ned Lamont, Governor of the state of Connecticut, in recognition and thanks to the many teachers who continue to commit and make a difference in the lives of children in Connecticut schools, do hereby, do hereby officially proclaim the week of May second through the sixth to be Teacher Appreciation Week. Signed, Ned Lamont.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benham. Now, the governor's words need to action on our, on our behalf, but I will entertain a motion from the board to adopt the resolution as I read just earlier.
So moved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. From you three, in whatever order. Looks like you're here to start.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. Anytime teachers can be celebrated and the profession can be elevated, it's just, it means a lot to, to me and to all of the teachers that I represent in Connecticut. So much of what we do in the classroom is unseen, so anytime we can shine a spotlight on the hard work and commitment that teachers have is just, it's wonderful. So thank you very much. You know, Kim speaks very well for us as educators. This has been an incredibly difficult time. In addition to a pandemic, you're well aware of the repeated attacks, we continue to see our profession really get publicly abused by maysayers and, and the people who don't really know what goes on in this school and the classroom. So anytime we are able to elevate the profession, hold up to people who show up every day for our children, who show up every day for our communities, who really don't ask for a lot of attention, who really actually thrive when there aren't the center of a lot of attention, and we have the moment to say thank you and to show gratitude for the sacrifices they've made. Many of our teachers talk openly about the fact that the last two years have taken a toll on them personally, and have really talked about the fact that they've given of their family to be there for other people's children. And I think that level of dedication, that level of commitment is worthy of note, is worthy to stop and to say thank you, and to ask the question of what can we do to continue to support, uplift, and grow? Because that's the next most pivotal aspect, is we need to determine how we're going to commit so that we grow this beautiful profession, we bring in new voices, new faces, and we show just the power of education and what it has been a thing for our communities, not just in taking care of children, but providing ourselves with a wonderful citizenry that's ready and prepared to continue to make Connecticut an incredible place to live, work, and raise generations of children to come. So for me, education is about hope, it's about the future, it's about prosperity, and it's about opportunity. And so to say thank you to teachers in this moment for the pivotal role they play in uplifting our community and our state is a good thing, and I thank you for that, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you to do this hard work and to grow our profession and continue to strengthen it with our, our partnership. So thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. I'm reading from our teachers. Kind of an all case, but I will tell you, three weeks ago, I was with Governor Ned Lamont at one of our schools in Weathersfield, and he was speaking with the students, and he looked up the crowd and said, how many of you want to be teachers? And not one hand went up. And of course, he says to me in the back, you're wrong. But you have to say something that they do realize the stress that the teachers have gone through in the last two years, and it's still there, it's there for the students, it's there for the educators, it's there for the whole community. So things like this, the appreciation, it goes a long way. So I want to say thank you to the board for, for being there, for support at the whole time, but also to Dr. Charlene Russell Tucker, who has just been amazing in her collaboration with us as stakeholders, and Desi, and looking for our input and ways that we can help our educators to do the hard job that they're doing. So I thank you all.
Commissioner? Thank you so much, and I am so thrilled that we have you here representing teachers today, and for the board to meet our Teacher of the Year, if you were not able to be at the event, which is great. Kim has been, I traversed in Washington, she's been the passenger with all of the Teachers of the Year, but I so appreciate it, just wanted to have voice. As, as you know, Jan said, we, we worked together very well. Doesn't mean we always agree on everything, but we really do have the hard conversations to find common ground on behalf of our, our kids and for our educators. As you know, when we talk about the social emotional wellbeing, I don't just talk about the students, but also for our staff, who are so critically important. So thank you. We do, we have the resolution, we have the governor's proclamation, and we're thinking of more things to do, just to say to our educators that we appreciate you, so thank you for taking that back to them. You know, there's a quote about, I said, what do kids say about their teachers? And, and I pulled one from, one from a six-year-old that said, my teacher thought I was smarter than I was, so I was. Teachers thought I was smarter than I was, so I was. And that is, you know, when you can tap into the brilliance of our students, that really is what it's all about. So thank you very much for nurturing the next generation. You know, I think we've got pictures on the.
Put some forward, yeah, we want to present these and, and get a couple of pictures. Put some forward.
Want to see the flag?
Yeah. I do, thank you, because I would have been a clarion, Jen, you too, just that, perfect, perfect.
Where are we looking? Oh, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you. It's a great. Thank you. And I feel happy to find. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Always good to have those celebratory moments during, during our meetings. At this point, there's no purpose for executive session, so I'll move to item four and ask for a motion on the minutes, the minutes of the April sixth, twenty twenty two State Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion? So move, second?
Second.
Thank you. It was moved improperly seconded. Are there any edits or provisions needed?
Certainly.
Yes.
There's one part that I think deserves sort of an adjustment. On page nine, under the report out front, the letter of the policy, the committee, the word M now, I think would be better represented by using the word articulate.
Okay, so the request is on page nine, in item ten D, to read, the committee is focused on racial imbalance and the need to articulate the importance of reaching racial balance. Yeah. Great. Anything else?
Well, I've noticed that some people are called doctors and others who have doctors are not, so I think we should be consistent.
We can speak for that consistency, absolutely. So perhaps we can go through and, and note if there's any place we'll make.
Is that a matter of personal preference, perhaps? Or?
No, I just think we should be consistent, because some people are doctors, others are not.
Well, I'm just wondering if people have their own feelings about being.
Oh, their personal preference.
I don't know.
Okay, so it seems that the practice is board members are addressed as board member, and then a guest with a honorific title will be, that, that's the, the practice will try to be consistent.
When it says president, it doesn't say doctor Karen Voice Walton, but it says doctor Kennedy.
Oh, it is. All right. Yeah, we can make those. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. We will make those adjustments. So seeing, seeing those adjustments, you ready for the vote? All of the, in favor of accepting the minutes of the April sixth, twenty twenty two State Board of Education, will see necessary corrections identified? Please do so by sign of eyes. Any opposed? All right, thank you. The minutes are approved. All right. So, good morning again. As we have just noted, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and it is wonderful to pause to recognize, and I feel absolutely honored to be selected to serve on a board that supports what arguably is the most important public trust, the education of our Connecticut students. So it's fitting that the board take time to pause and recognize the educators now during this time that is set by to honor the work of, of teachers, and additionally, being able to celebrate Connecticut's Teacher of the Year. Today, board members, settle in. We have a full packed agenda, but it is important, important work that we are doing today's meeting. We'll have an opportunity to consider additional standards regarding the teaching of business, management, and administration, finance, and marketing. We will consider the report of the Litchfield Regional School District Six and the current racial imbalance report. We also have an opportunity to act on the approval of several commissioners' network school extensions, and based upon expressed board member priorities, we will dig in around school attendance and Fairfield School District's work in addressing their longstanding racial imbalance. So jam-packed, but that important work that we'll be taking on. Given the length of today's agenda and also looking forward to what is anticipated for June's agenda, we are going to move our intended evening meeting, which we like to have out in the community, to be in the fall, and we think that will better accommodate the, the needs of the public who would like to come out and participate and have, have access to the work of the State Board of Education. And remind the board members, June will also mark time when we'll have opportunity to be in retreat and work on the five-year strategic plan. Since we last met, I continue to serve on the Remote Learning Commission, helping to advance a set of recommendations that will come before you shortly around the implementation of, or recommendations around the remote learning school. Thank you to Vice Chair Benham, who has also been busy attending numerous meetings, including the governor's roundtable for the Connecticut Model Curriculum rollout, and is going to be representing us at the research showcase at Integrated Day Charter School, which we all heard about when they came before, their charter renewal. So I'm eager to hear how the research showcase goes. And this month's quote comes from Jane Austen, who reminds us that it isn't what we say or think that defines us, but what we do. And so with that in mind, board members, let us do. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn a question for me. We can move to the report of our commissioner.
Thank you very much, and good morning again. So I should let everyone know today is the end of the legislative session, go through midnight. And I share that Laura Stephan, as you see, is not in the room, so she's monitoring things, and you may see some of our staff getting up and down, and I'm probably checking my phone much more than I would be today, because there's a lot happening. So I just wanted you to know that, that there could be a little bit of that happening around us, and she may need to connect with our team. I draw your attention to a few of the activities in the report. First off, just keeping you updated on our agency staffing, retirement, and position refills, that continue to be an extreme area of focus for us. Retirement continues not only in the agency, but in our technical high school system. I shared numbers last month, over the next few months, however, we anticipate at least, at least another forty-four members of our both communities retiring to that CTEC and also our agency. And, and this is occurring at a time where I'm sure if you've been keeping tabs on what's happened legislatively, there's a lot of new work that is coming to the agency. So we are continuing to work with our DAS Smart Unit on position management, but I can tell you, it is something that we're fairly concerned about and continue to work as hard as we can in that space. In our agency update later, we'll continue to share with you new guidance that we've provided on, as you know, our case rates continue to, we continue to see an uptick, and so we've provided guidance to our districts on that. Yesterday, we had our health and safety meeting, we're still doing those, although the rhythm may have changed, with over three hundred participants, again, access to us and also to, to DPH to answer questions. In terms of where I've been this past month, I was really pleased to join Commissioner By in the launch of the first ever parent cabinet in Connecticut. This cabinet is a diverse parent-led advisory group to the Office of Early Childhood, meets regularly to help make improvements in the lives of children, and so I was just pleased to be a part of that launch this past month. Maggie will update you on the voice for change when we get to our agency report, but I was also invited and gladly participated in our parent educator listening session and roundtable to hear directly from our parent educators, hearing what their issues are, and their continued commitment to serving our students and supporting our teachers. And so it was great just to be on the call with them, open up that line of communication so we know we can further support them. And so I was pleased this board appreciated our parent educators last month, and they appreciated that we were able to do that. I've met with a host of others here, as you can see, but really, was really thrilled to have provided opening remarks at the Educated Diversity Symposium that occurred. Dr. Shawna Tucker and Dr. Regina Atkins were kind of the planners behind that, at Quinnipiac was where we met. Educators Rising Connecticut, as you know, aims to change the face of teaching by supporting our young people on paths from middle and high school through college into education careers. So there was about a hundred and eighty-four or so young people in the auditorium there from eight different school districts. Great that they were able to come on campus and participated in workshops, there were three workshops, The Education Profession Needs You was one of them, the other was Multiple Pathways to Careers in Education, and then there was a student open mic facilitated by some of our students, which are just awesome in that space, and so it was great to have them together, and you'll see some pictures when we do the, the agency update. So that work is occurring. And finally, I went to AI Prince for the IT Girls event, and joined Superintendent Solik and Principal Mello and Patricia Mann, who is the educator there, in greeting the students defense, targets middle school girls whose sole purpose is to reduce the knowledge and gender gap and spark interest in the IT field, so they are hands-on, they were able to do robotics, drone technology was another, and virtual reality that they participated in, which was really great. And so, although this may sound like just activities, I really want to bring us back to the fact that these are intentional opportunities to continue to deliver on the board's plan and the four promises to our students, making sure that students learn what they need to know to succeed in college, career, and life, giving students great access to great teachers and school leaders, supporting schools and districts and staying on target with learning goals, and ensuring students' non-academic needs are met so that they're healthy, happy, and ready to learn. And so all these activities and initiatives are really focused on equity and excellence, and making sure that we continue to bring the board's plan to life. And so my last update for you, as you're aware, the Killing the Ten Four B process, we had given a deadline, an extension of their response to, and you all, I did see the copy of the letter that was sent, was due yesterday, so the end, yesterday, I think at the end of the day, we did, Mike has the response in his hand, and so we'll be working on that, and we'll certainly keep the board updated. So thank you very much. Open to questions?
Yes, are the questions with Commissioner?
Chair, may I ask a question?
Please.
You mentioned the educators rising, and I think that has the potential to be really an outstanding program, but who is responsible for measuring, keeping track of, of how many of the alumni that will actually become teachers?
So that's all a part of the work that our talent office, so I'm definitely, I'll start his leadership, will be working on. Ed Rising Connecticut is a part of a national initiative, and so that is a part of that process that they're working on. And as we reported last time, on the men of color, kind of part of that work as well, where we have some students, young men of color, in a couple of our districts that are for the first time piloting that program as well.
Yes, I think it's really important to measure these all, so I hope that we see that it actually is having an impact.
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Just to add with Commissioner, the model curricular rollout that we both attended with the Governor's Roundtable, only to mention, because there's the A and A of C in the house, that this is, I know you were there, Kate, and it was a marvelous, and the first time that you saw this rollout. But I would really encourage our groups to really expand this with your teachers, because it's, Kate knows it's a female. And as I said, since I've seen it last couple of months, I wish it was there when I was in the classroom. So it is something to look into, so I'd like to point it out to the C and A of C.
Great, thank you for that. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. As always, it's amazing to see what you get done month to month. Quite impressive. Let's move to our action items. Item seven A is the adoption of the MBA Research Standards for Business Management and Administration, Finance and Marketing. And while the team moves, is there a motion on this item?
Someone?
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Shawna Tucker. We're chaired by Vice Wilson and board members. I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Melissa Hickey and Suzanne Loud, who are working for the Department of Education overseeing the development of these standards. I would like to cite the Academic Standards and Assessment Subcommittee of the Board, where we were able to share a review of these standards. So we are excited to be here today to present for your favorable approval and adoption of the MBA Research Standards for Business Management and Administration, Finance and Marketing. In your packet, you do have an executive summary along with copies of the standards. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Melissa Hickey to provide some more context.
Thank you. And good morning.
Good morning.
So as you saw in the documents, this is part of an ongoing process that was legislated years ago for us to be working on updating standards and providing standards for career and technical education. We started this process with the ASPE Standards for Ag in 2018. And then immediately, Suzanne and I got to work on the next round of standards, which were the marketing standards. Suzanne Loud has led that effort. And what she and I did over the next few years was to get a lot of stakeholder input, as you also saw in documents, from various teachers, administrators. We did rounds at the time, asking for people to come forward, be part of the work, or to give statements on surveys, etc. After starting to work on just one area of standards, we made a decision with these stakeholders that we could actually do the entire business core. Now, I don't know if you know Suzanne Loud, but she is an energetic go-getter. So instead of working and concentrating on one area of standards, she agreed to do three. So that's what we're presenting to you today for your review and approval, is not only the one, but the three and the business core. And the reason that stakeholders, and we went with the MBA research is just because of the title alone in addition to. So let's start with the title of research. They are research-based. They work intentionally with business and industry to align to the needs of business and industry. They are rigorous. They involve student projects, which we know is so important for students to take what they are learning and applying in the situations that is real life, real world. So thank you so much for your review. And I turn it over for questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for your work. Are there questions of the board? Yes.
I guess, maybe you can explain how these are going to be used. It says MBA. Is this a master's in business administration? Or is this a program that we've done in the, in high schools? How will these be used?
Excellent question. MBA, that is part of their name. And what they are going to work with would be three career clusters, as Chief Parisi said, is this management and admin, finance and marketing. In a collegiate major, you will find those three career clusters represented as areas of concentration. So our linkage here to post-secondary credential attainment is critical. What MBA found working was in their research, which begins and ends with industry, which is unique in this realm. They found that those three career clusters, or at the collegiate level, major concentrations, had cross-cutting skills, foundational cross-cutting skills and knowledge that cut across all three. So that's where we start with the business core. And then we layer with increasing specificity to the career cluster and pathway. So these standards will help districts and teachers develop curriculum, curriculum for these areas. And these learning standards are the foundation of the curriculum, the instructional materials, how they roll it out to their teachers with professional development and the design and execution of student assessment. And we really feel, to sum it all up, that MBA standards, there's a whole, there's a whole piece that is needed and for quality for our learners.
Just kind of continuing, I guess the, so the core standards, you got the instruct, I got one of business law. Is it? Do you just want to talk about the material?
Okay, so let's look at the business, look at the business law.
Okay.
If you were in a finance one-on-one course or an intro business course or an intro marketing course at the high school level, the business core pertaining to business law, you would need that information and probably cover it as foundational information in all of those courses, even though they are ultimately in different career clusters. It's common to all of them. And when you see all of this alphabet soup and these numbers, it's the shorthand for these standards, which can get pretty complex and really get into the weeds as you get into it. Those are there to help practitioners to know which instructional areas they're focusing on and to help them align their goals and objectives down to the level of their daily instruction.
So if you go down at the bottom, you've got your prerequisite, career sustaining, specialist, supervisor, manager, owner. At what level are you approaching, and you're different, subsections in the top have one of those parentheses with that in there. At what level are you teaching at, at the high school level?
Okay, that's another very nice clarifying question for everyone. Thanks for asking it. Most of the high school courses will be taught at the prereq, career sustaining, and then the upper junior and senior levels may also touch upon the specialist level. When we get into the supervisor, manager, and owner levels, that is really at the post-secondary level. These standards will cover from grade nine through fourteen. And part of that manager and owner, those levels are there because MBA infuses entrepreneurship. It is not a career cluster, but it addresses entrepreneurship in all of those clusters and all of the pathways. Because you could start a business of your own in a finance pathway, in a business admin pathway, or in a marketing pathway. So for the small business owners that I feel are really the backbone of a state like Connecticut, really do so much for our economy, we felt that it was important that the MBA standards have that in them for that entrepreneurship piece.
Use what, so you said nine to fourteen. Does that mean this would go from high school into community college?
Yes. Yes.
It would cover the whole gamut of the things that you've outlined.
Yeah. We find that many of our business management, finance, and marketing courses are really taking off with dual credit opportunities. The MBA standards really buttress that movement towards the dual credit. And their standards align very well. It's kind of seamless fit for those dual credit courses. Of course, the high schools must align to the community college or the college syllabus and text and whatnot. But this fits because the level of rigor is there.
These are extremely detailed, you know, great. You can go out and talk to a lot of managers who don't know much about these things. So it's good if they're educated. And you did a tremendous amount of work in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. So all of in favor of the adoption of the MBA Research Standards for Business Management and Administration, Finance and Marketing? Please do so by a sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
That was a deep sigh.
Grateful.
All right, moving to item seven B, which is the final report of the Litchfield Regional School District Six Temporary Regional School Study Committee. Is that in motion? Thank you. Second? All right. Thank you all for joining us.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are here to bring your attention for your review, a proposal from the Litchfield Regional School District Number Six, Temporary Regional School Study Committee. They have committed a final report to the board pursuant to statute. And I think for some brief background, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Matt Menhorst.
Hi, Clay. Good morning again. I'm Matt Menhorst of the lawyering legal office here at the Department of Education. I work on regional school district matters. You might remember me from the March meeting when we had just the same type of committees, the Temporary Regional School Study Committee, involving different communities. And that went a different way. But just by way of background, this committee is required to be established pursuant to a legal process in order to study the issue of whether forming a new regional school district is advisable and ultimately commence that process of actually forming one. And so that's, that's what this committee report is. Just some more background about these communities. Litchfield is a K-12 school district. Regional School District Six is also a K-12 district, consisting of the towns of Goshen, Morris, and Warren. The regional high school of Region Six, known as Womago, is actually located in the town of Litchfield, which is a very kind of unusual circumstance in Connecticut. And it's a kind of an interesting tidbit here, given what's being proposed. Just a little more background on the law. I'm going to just hand it over to the committee in a moment to sort of talk through the report. But so this is the committee that's required to form a regional district. The committee ultimately makes a recommendation and a report as to whether it's advisable after examining the issues, setting the factors that are outlined in statute, and then submits it to the towns and to the state board. And the state board can either approve the plan or reject the plan. And in this case, or I should say, upon approval of the plan, should that ultimately happen, the question actually goes back to the, to the towns to hold referenda to the question of whether a regional school district should be established in accordance with this plan. So that's kind of just an overview of how the process works. And the regional school district would be established upon an affirmative vote in each of the towns. So that's kind of the process going forward. Looking back just a little bit as to recent history here, maybe some, not so recent history. This committee was established in October of 2021. The first meeting was held on October 25th of October 2021. But really, as you may have noted in the report, the question of whether to establish a consolidated district amongst these communities has been threatened for far longer than that, really. You can see in summary finding number one and then appendix one, consolidation efforts were considered in 1988, 1992. But the process did not move forward to referendum at that time. Much more recently, during the summer of 2021, last summer, there was a work group on collaboration that was formed in these communities, consisted of more than thirty people, actually, from the four communities, both from the school district, parents, town officials. And they met to consider whether to form a consolidated district. They ultimately recommended in favor of doing so. And this committee was established following that process. As you can see, the committee has determined that regionalization is advisable. They submitted their report formally on April 4th of this year. I'll just do a few seconds on the proposal in broad strokes, and then I'll hand it over. So as you may have noted, the committee's proposal would allow for a single consolidated district. It would be operated by a single Board of Education with twelve members, free from each of the towns. The votes on the new Board of Education, the new Regional Board of Education will be weighted in accordance with statute. In the proposed plan, elementary students would continue to be educated locally within town boundaries. The region's middle school students would attend the current Litchfield Middle High School and the current Womago Regional High School, which is Region Six's high school, would become the new regional high school for all the district's students. The committee found that the, that this consolidated district would allow for enhanced educational opportunities. You may have seen some of the statistics about the courses that are available, a wider variety of courses would be available to students that are not currently available, to some of the students in each of the districts under the proposal. And it would also be associated with some long-term financial savings. I'm sure you noted the, those forecasts, those are, those numbers actually are, you know, are not precisely ascertainable at this moment, but the committee, after through all its work, did determine that there would be some significant long-term financial savings. In terms of the department, the department supports this plan, recommends approval, given that it meets statutory criteria, and it does represent the unanimous will of the committee. And so at this point, I'll hand it over to Superintendent Leoni and to the committee chairs.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mike. Board members, Commissioner, thank you for having us here today. I want to speak of the importance of this work. So I have a unique position being shared across two districts as a superintendent. Matt talked about, you know, the establishment of Region Six. That was actually established in 1953 as a seven-twelve by Warren, Morris, and Goshen, with their high school sitting at Litchfield and not bringing Litchfield to the table. In 1970, they expanded it to a K-12. And statute was actually different. And doing some of the historical work here, one of the towns, Goshen, didn't even agree on it, but the popular vote overrode it. In this day and age, you actually need each of the four towns to approve this type of measure. In 1988 and in 1992, as Matt mentioned, the four communities were saving the dam. And much of the failure was along the lines of, you should join them. No, you should join us. To understand that, it's to understand two very basic concepts. One district's colors are blue. The other district's colors are red. We only do that in November, I understand. But more so, one district... But more so, one district is represented as the Cowboys. The other district was the Warriors. Up until recent amplification, the logo was a Native American. She's, that has since been changed. It was designed never to actually allow the people to have a say. And the goal for the last three years, I'm joined today by Steve Tracy, Bill Dowdenport, who chaired this committee, was to bring this topic, this subject, to the people of four towns and give them a choice after nearly seventy years on the future of education for their children. Why is that important? Small districts across our state can't afford classes, don't offer robust programs, can barely field varsity sports, and then have to try to figure out what CIAC allows for co-op. Meanwhile, you talk to our students, they play high-town baseball together. This doesn't matter to them. Sparkle and shine in the stands true that has probably the majority of my students participating across all four towns. Litchfield Hills Soccer Club represents all four towns. If you look at our prom guest invite list, our high schoolers are just happy to be back in person without masks and looking forward to a real prom this year, and needless to say, the guest list for Litchfield has Womago students, and the Womago guest list has Litchfield students. These young men, these young women, our students grow up, they stay in our community, have helped us, they date, they get married, and the good news is, they keep enrolling, Zoe. What we're asking today is to be able to give these four communities an opportunity to do something that they haven't had in seventy years with the creation of something new. This is not Litchfield joining Region Six or Region Six joining Litchfield. And it calls for a two-year transition plan, which is very important. One of the key details in this, Matt mentioned we included parents, community, teachers. We also had all of our bargaining units at the table during this three-year process. And if Region Twenty comes to pass by public will and true democracy, and they have a board, that board is required to even collectively bargain with our existing unions and staff before opening. Seventy-five percent of staff reduction will come from attrition or retirement. We're also looking after a faculty and a staff where over sixty percent live and work in these four towns. There is savings. That savings can go back to the public or can be reinvested. There's fairness and balance along government and ship. Weight vote required by the law, but also at the same time, ensuring that every town must have a yes vote in a matter. No big town versus little town, or little town versus big town. Not that. This is a regional district. Regional districts are built on cooperation. This is a new model. It would be Region Twenty, it's the next available number, but the good news is, if you take Twenty, but it's stopped right in the middle, it's regionalization two-point-oh. It's a cooperative model. It's a different model, not one that's been tried before, but one that is possible to move forward with your approval. I thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to? That was very well said.
I'm standing back in order, this is a season familiar face, as I started on the board for, I think, five years, so anyhow, I know many of you probably heard me many times mention this R-word, regionalization, and I have a perfect example of why it really needs to happen, so we're here with a standing plan. Thanks to our superintendent, he's amazing, I really, I worked for many superintendents, I wish I could work for him in my past teaching career, but he happens to take so many people together and bring communities together, and we're just excited to finally, after sixty years, decades of this conversation in these towns, to have the go-to voters for each of the four towns to consider, because it's really, it's unsustainable if we keep going where we are, and this is such an opportunity for much more opportunity for education for the students, while being more physically responsible and just more of an effective concern for taxpayers as well going forward. So it's just, it's an outstanding program and a great plan, and I look forward to hopefully having your support so we can get this to the voters, but thank you. And one thing on Region Twenty, the slogan I've seen around town is better together, and I just, it's perfect, so thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. So many, a long time ago, observed that there are people who make things happen, there are people who watch things happen, and there are people who wonder, what happened? And that's very much what our four communities be in the former category, and by this plan, I think we set the stage for that, in the best interest of our citizens, our teachers, our taxpayers, but most importantly, our students, you know, the opportunity for better programming and more opportunity to execute this plan. So I also want to add to Bill's comment, our thanks and appreciation to Superintendent Leonie, it is his initiative and persistence more than any other thing, that has brought the communities together to make this proposal to you. We thank you for your attention and hope for your approval.
Thanks. Thank you for being here, and thank you for presenting the regionalization model at two-point-oh. I think the way you've described it is exactly where we need to be leaning as a state in terms of how we build something collaborative, bleed together, so thank you for that. More members, any questions? Yeah.
I guess one, just a compliment. You know, many have tried, and you guys really succeeded, and I could tell by the, you know, the way you did the bylaws and a variety of other things, it took a lot of, it was a stretch. You really came up with a way that worked for everybody, and I just, my heartfelt congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Alan?
I'd like to add mine as well. I've been watching Connecticut politics and grew up in North Haven and understand the city suburb and all of the tendencies towards thinking of each municipality as an independent kingdom of some sort, and you've overcome all that, and it's rare and really wonderful to see, so I thank you.
Very nice. All right. This is, this feels like a very monumental and big moment. Absolutely, so I think we're ready for the questions. All of in favor of the Litchfield Regional School District Six Temporary Regional School Study Committee Final Report? Please do so by a sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Very good, the motion carries. Congratulations. Thanks for being with the voters in your town. I might have held you here long today, but it would be for monumental and important things. Item seventeen B is the reading of the racial imbalance report, and as our team gathers to present this, I'll entertain a motion on item seventeen B. Second?
I'm feeling like a late-night talk show host, trying to, you know.
You're doing a great job. We're going to hook you again.
And we're here today to talk about the most recent numbers with respect to racial imbalance, and I want to turn this over to one of my esteemed colleagues, Laura Amastadi, who is the acknowledged master of this particular field.
Well, I have to fore you the racial imbalance report, which is based on the October one, two thousand twenty-one numbers, enrollment numbers for the school districts. As you can see, we have a small number of school districts with racial imbalance schools. In fact, we have two school districts in the state now with racial imbalance schools, Greenwich and Fairfield. I think it's encouraging to see that we have such a small number. West Hartford Charter Oak Academy has just fallen below the racial imbalance limit of twenty-five percent, and hopefully that trend will continue into the future. We have eight school districts in the state with nineteen schools that have impending imbalance. We do watch the impending imbalance school districts because those schools, those schools the trend could be going upwards. We notify them every year of their numbers, and we encourage them to take action before they are required to come up with a plan and present it to the state board. Now, see, the districts with racial imbalance plans in place at this time are Fairfield, Greenwich, Camden, and I believe that, is that it? The Hampton Board of Education currently has two schools with impending imbalance. They have a plan in place that involves some school construction, and they will also are also looking at redistricting and reconfiguring their schools. This process is in place right now, they are in the works, and it looks like they are moving towards fulfilling their plan as presented to the board. Fairfield, which you will be discussing, you'll be meeting with them later on today to discuss their plan, they have provided us with a timeline that involves providing the state board with a more detailed plan going forward by next June. And the Greenwich Board of Education currently has two schools with racial imbalance. They also have a number of schools with impending imbalance. Hamilton Avenue School is a magnet school. They have, over the years, tried to change their themes for the schools. It does not seem to be making a marked impact on the racial imbalance numbers there. I think part of the problem that they have encountered is that fundamentally, it is a neighborhood school, and they use the extra seats available in the school to attract students from outside the attendance zone. This has not had a sufficient impact due to the capacity of the school. They have the same issue at New Lebanon School, which also is a neighborhood school. This is an international baccalaureate program, which is very popular with families. However, very few families have opted to move to other schools outside the district and wanted to stay in their neighborhood school as well, and that means that their capacity is not as open for students outside the attendance zone to attend. So that is really a nutshell of the plans that are in place. The Legislation Policy Development Committee has been meeting with these districts to discuss their plans and get updates on their progress. Greenwich will be meeting with the LPDC in June, and West Hartford providing an update today to the committee.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything? No. I think.
I do. I'm trying to intervene and speak articulately, not always successful, but appreciate the numbers and the overview from Laura and Mike. Just that we have been meeting with the school districts, have not met with Camden, but have met with Greenwich, Fairfield, and West Hartford. You know, we'll be sort of circling back to this conversation later in the agenda when Fairfield comes before us and through with the update of the committee reports, but I think what we have really started to struggle more specifically with, even in our discussions, is, that I sort of previewed last meeting, is more of a discussion about why is it that equity in our schools is important, right? And there's something that isn't being communicated in a way. I'm actually really intrigued by what you're saying about Camden and them actually taking steps forward in redistricting. You know, we have had, we've basically, we've basically heard from districts that their strategy is, let's just wait to see what our natural demographics shifts happen, you know, actually occur in our town, and then eventually we'll be equally diverse within the town, and we won't really have to deal with it. I'm summarizing, I'm being a little crass, but that's really the sort of strategy that I think is per from the districts, and really struggle with trying to push on them about potential, you know, that next step of actually looking at attendance zones and redistricting and prioritizing this over that sort of snap that was described as, well, these are neighborhood schools. Our towns just look this way, people live in the houses that they live in, and we can't change that. It's really not a message of they can, it's just that they won't. And so I think that's really what we, in the Legislative Policy and Development Committee, have been trying to impress on the districts since they've come before us. So, you know, as you listen to Fairfield later this afternoon, our real struggle is that it has been many, many years that they have made another plan, and made another plan, and made another plan, and I've been here for several of those plans, and there's just not a good lever, right, that we can, that we feel like we can, there are, there's one, but what's the pressure, what's the message, what is it that we, what more do we, as a board of the state, need to be communicating to really shift the mindset around the importance of actually addressing racial imbalance in schools? So that was more of a soapbox in comments. I don't know, I'm stopping now.
Now, I appreciate the work that your committee has been doing on this issue. By your very.
I've got to add to that soapbox, because this is, as you know, has been going on for some time, as Malia referenced. This has probably come to the Legislation Policy Development Committee for the last eight years, at least, since I've been sitting on this board, and I agree with you, we can celebrate that there's small numbers, but the concern is the two that sit there that stand out. You know, and I looked back in it, one of, this has gone on for twenty-three years for one school and sixteen for another, and that is, you know, I agree with Malia, the mindset, there has to be a lever here, I mean, there has to be, and then to see one of these districts have so many more now on impending, clearly, they are not hearing our concerns, because now we're expanding it, possibly, that we'll see next year when this report comes, that's more. So I appreciate, you know, Laura, all the work that she put into this, and I appreciate that it still continues to be a major topic for the Legislation Policy Committee, and I'd like to look forward to this afternoon with Fairfield, but we are seeing things over and over, and if it's not the same plan that we keep seeing, we hear the same, there's a change in the superintendent, there's a change in the board president, that can't be something that we continue to do for years and years and years.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So thank you for putting in the room what the issues and concerns are. I really want to thank our Laura, our resident expert in this area, for the work, but also for situational awareness for the board, what we've done, and in many years, the districts would come just to the board and do the presentations, and so we had the shift to start having the policy committee being a part of that, not because it was going to be easier, but because we recognized it's more, you know, focused effort from the policy level to really start thinking about what those levers are. Policy shifts could be that we need to be thinking about, and in the agency's perspective, we've put our chief academic officer and others with Laura, so she was not kind of alone in the legal space, but programmatically, are there things that we could leverage to help to support and provide, to provide support? So I just really wanted to put that in the space. Again, it is a major challenge, but I'm confident that with more frequency in having these conversations, and with the policy committee having this as a focus, that we'll work through that to figure out what those levers are, as you've mentioned.
Thank you. And I certainly, having had the opportunity to fit in the policy meetings under Malia's leadership, have appreciated the better of the conversation. under Malia's leadership, have appreciated the, um, the better of the conversation being about um how this affects all of our children and the benefit to all of our children to learn in um diverse um educational settings. And so we will continue looking at the schools that are in imbalance and that are in impending imbalance and will continue to push the broader conversation. So, um, with that, are there any questions for this report, regarding this report? Being none, all of you.
Yes, yes. Good morning, too.
Good morning, everyone.
Yes, and I, I was thinking about, what about the, the, the method of recruitment? I mean, um, what, what has been done in terms of to be able to identify the, the diverse population? Is there something in place that we ought to consider differently?
I'm sorry, repeat this.
The question is about um what kind of student recruitment is being, how to initiate a, because what is the light enough for the people to take it up?
Yeah, I didn't quite hear you.
Thank you. I think the question is about what these districts are doing to recruit students into the schools that are um imbalanced in order to create um greater, greater racial diversity in the schools.
It depends upon the school district because each school district has their own plan in place. Um, you know, some districts have chosen um magnets as being a solution. Um, one district that was pop, that actually was able to have some very significant changes to racial imbalance numbers was Groton. Groton actually has put in place a number of uh themed magnets um throughout their district and these are not necessarily neighborhood schools. So they have um really started to change the diversity and they still have schools that have, that are, you know, have, you know, more than, than other, more uh different colors than others. However, they are actually bringing those numbers down and making it more, um, it seems to be, you know, equalizing quite a bit. And they've been very successful with that. I think the school districts that have really struggled are the school districts that have chosen, you know, to maintain the neighborhood school structure. Um, and so if they set up a magnet in a particular neighborhood, the idea is, oh, we'll attract students from outside this neighborhood, but we, we're not going to tell people who live in the neighborhood, you can't go to your school anymore. And yes, that's very popular and that's what, you know, the community probably would prefer, but the result is that they have fewer seats available to students outside the attendance zone and then they can't really have a significant impact on the racial imbalance numbers. And I think that really is what is hampering Greenwich and um as well as, you know, the issues that they uh discussed with us in the meeting with uh transportation. Um, and West Hartford, uh, it took them a very long time to get to where they are now, but they're still, they have two schools with an, an impending imbalance and they're not too far from going back in the wrong direction. So, um, you know, again, it depends on what they're doing, but, you know, I know West Hartford was discussing that they have a significant outreach in other attendance zones, trying to encourage families to apply to the magnets. They have over three hundred applications this year, um, but as I said, they only have sixty spaces for those students on the average in a year.
Yeah, thank you, Laura.
And I just wanted to, to further, what Hartford actually, they have four.
Right.
Schools on impending imbalance.
Oh, they, we hope that are just, just there. Yeah.
Um, and, and to the, to, to what's long, uh, point, right, is that what we're additionally trying to express is that having an overly represented school of white children is also problematic. Um, so there tends to be a lot more focus on the schools that have an overrepresentation, so to speak, of children of color and not in the other direction. Um, and so really also want to shine as bright of a light in both directions.
Thank you. Okay, being no other questions, um, thank you. We will take a vote on receipt of this year's racial imbalance report. It's been moved improperly seconded. All of the favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. We will stay tuned. Um, we have already handled item seventeen. There is, there are no financial matters. That brings us to item nine, our consent agenda, at items nine, eight, two, S. Is there anybody wishing to remove anything from consent agenda? Seeing none, the chair will initiate a motion for items uh nine, eight, three, S, under consent agenda. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly seconded. All of the favor? Uh, any votes? Thank you. Consent agenda carried. Committee report, uh, academic standard and assessment.
Yes, we are. We'll be, good morning, all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I believe this month, um, I was looking at my calendar and couldn't identify the date, but once I do, I'll send out a note.
Okay, so the committee will have a meeting upcoming and that will be communicated. Thank you. Accountability and work, if you want.
Yes, I'd like to start with having Malia report out on last month's meeting because I was not able to attend.
Goodness, that's right.
Probably should remind you.
So focused on what happened this morning.
I know, it's my logic.
Yes, true. Uh, we, uh, as when we met this past month, we had a, a great presentation from the New Lebanon Public School Superintendent, um, and her colleagues around the, um, the new prepay and K through three, I believe, programs that they have operating um in the school. Shared, uh, just the, the great sort of um collaboration that they've been able to, to make to, to get these schools up and running. Um, and um, it was just a nice presentation. I'm not sure that there's much more to say about it. The others that were there, uh, I encourage your, your comments, too, but it was a, it was a nice opportunity to see some really positive work happening.
Thank you.
What did you want to add?
Thank you.
Um, our next accountability and support meeting will be on May nineteenth. Um, and just what we'd like to inform the board members, at that meeting, we will be entertaining um possible entering into the network from Hartford and Hampton school system. So, um, why I'm bringing that up is that any board member can attend and this will be, we have not entered anyone into the network for some time, so it could be um a meeting that perhaps would be very informative, you know, you don't have to be on accountability support to, um, attend. And that will be on May nineteenth, um, three to fourth survey. So I'd encourage you, if you can, to attend that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Dawn is traveling for a wonderful family event, so I don't believe we have a report from financial audit and budget, legislation and policy.
We did something other than talk about racial imbalance this morning. Uh, we also had a, a presentation on, um, an updated definition of what needs to be absent, um, so revising the accused and unaccused, um, absent definitions, especially in light of, uh, virtual, um, education. Uh, that's going to come before the board at a future meeting, um, in, yeah, just to lay that out there. Um, and then we also, as you've already heard, um, heard an update from the West Hartford Public Schools. And, um, because they have, uh, now all of their schools in the, you know, are actually in the imbalance category, they are shifted to, um, impending imbalance, um, we did ask them to come back a year from now, um, in order to, to keep us apprised of the, the hopeful progress that they're making at continuing to shift those numbers down. Um, and that was, that was us.
Great, thank you. The CTEC. We have a report.
Can you see the superintendent down there?
Yes. CTEC report? Would you like to come to the table? Thank you. Good to see you.
Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a racial report this morning regarding CTECs and all of the exciting, wonderful end of year, almost end of year events. Um, I would like to start by saying thank you to our Commissioner of Education. We held a very special event last Friday known as the IT Girls over at PrinTech, which is really a focus on women and their achievements in technology education. And our commissioner very nicely came over. She spoke to the girls at the event and truly inspired them in terms of their work moving forward. Uh, we saw displays on robotics, we saw displays regarding, uh, the use of drones and lots of other exciting technologies that, that these women have been intimately involved in developing as part of their programming. So my thanks to the commissioner for her direct participation in that. It made it a very special event for us and for them. I'm pleased to announce that out of fifteen of the eighteen CTEC schools who applied for Voices for Change, we have twelve schools that have, uh, been awarded to that program. We are so very excited on behalf of the students and the schools for the opportunities that this presents. Um, they will have the opportunity to implement, now that they have developed and proposed programming, they will implement that programming in the schools during both the end of this year and into next year. And we'd like to provide you with a follow-up report so that you have a better idea of exactly what programs, uh, they did propose in development and how that whole, uh, piece is progressing. So my thanks, uh, to all who, uh, achieved particularly for facilitating that, really helping us as a district, um, participate such a large measure so successfully. Last month, I mentioned to you that we had six students and an instructor participate in the NASA, uh, the annual NASA convention in Houston, Texas. I'm pleased to report that they returned, um, each and every single student that participated in that program came away just incredibly inspired by the work that, uh, both, that they were participating in and that they saw while they were in the convention itself. They had opportunities to interact directly with NASA, uh, employees, with NASA trainees. Uh, they presented programming that they had developed as part of, uh, their participation along with students nationally and they got to see really the quality of their work as compared to many, many other students from across the country. And it is safe to say that CTEC is, uh, is, is, in, in, in right and first standing in terms of the quality of the work that our students are able to produce. So we are planning, uh, a June CTEC board meeting where all of our students will have the opportunity to present their projects to the board, um, and follow up directly with the board. I mentioned last month as well, we had financial support from Mr. DePry on our CTEC board as well as, uh, Dr. George Anderson from Symphony, who basically provided, uh, the majority of the funding for the entire trip. So it was really a wonderful opportunity for our students. And finally, in celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week, we have selected as of Monday this year's Teacher of the Year, and I'm pleased to say that we will be bringing this year and last year's Teachers of the Year to the state ceremony coming up on May tenth. So we're very excited about that. So lots of great things happening at CTEC.
Thank you. I was glad that you brought us the update that the NASA trip was very exciting to hear about, to hear how it went. Um, do board members have any questions? Seeing none, thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
Nazbe, Woody.
Yes, well, um, the four regional directors of ASI, of which I'm one, have been inviting uh people from the state boards to join the Government Affairs Committee and the Public Education Positions Committee. And, uh, NASB would like to have one person from each state on these committees. So, uh, I'm on the Government Affairs Committee, uh, but, um, uh, I've been trying to, uh, invite someone to join the Public Education Positions Committee and I haven't had any papers yet, so I think I'll be sending a invitation to all of you. Uh, we have, uh, even a video and, uh, and an explanation of what the, what the committee does. So, uh, if you'd be able to look out for that, uh, I hope we can have a Connecticut member of that committee.
Okay, don't make Woody have to taste you down. Thank you for your work representing us at that level, then. Um, and our third report.
You have just the usual report in your, um, folder. Um, I'd just like to point out on the back page, um, and some of you might have already re, um, responded that you're attending, but the dismantling of the systemic racism conference is this Friday. If you haven't, um, been able to attend before, it's an excellent conference. I encourage you to do that. And it is still virtual for this year. I think they have to reply to you.
Yes, thank you.
You have to reply to all this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's move to our discussion item, um, under eleven, um, beginning with student attendance engagement. And this has come up, um, certainly in the context of, of the disruption of the last couple of years and the board members have been very interested in, um, getting some information and updates on what, what has been helpful and what's the state of the world out there in our inner schools. So thank you, John, for being prepared for this.
Good morning. Our team is coming in from the other.
I know, they're coming out, uh, great, okay, on the other.
Wanted to make sure that, uh, Mr. Clement.
I, I am here. I, I know. So, um, can I, uh, tell the board that our, uh, Academic Assessments Meeting will be May tenth, which I thought it was, but I didn't want to speak. Uh, but I wanted to make sure the board knew, especially this was my moment for the day, so, and I needed to get my moment in, so it's May tenth.
Thank you. So this is kind of ask and you shall receive. So thank you, uh, Mr. Clement, for, as you listened, if you recall, listened to charter schools as they were going through, uh, their reauthorization process and lots of conversations around attendance. And out of that came the ask that we really need to get a better sense, uh, for this board to get a better sense of where we are and what's happening on the ground. Uh, so with that, I'll turn the page over to John.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good morning, board members. Nice to be here and talking this morning. Uh, I'm joined by, uh, some esteemed colleagues, both from across the country and across the state, um, and we'll get to introductions, uh, as they start. Um, I just wanted to, just to start briefly talking about, um, you know, we've been working on this issue of chronic absenteeism and attendance for a very long time. Commissioner, uh, led this work, it's over a decade ago. Uh, and we continue to, to strive to reduce the levels of chronic absenteeism, uh, and work with our district for that practice and making sure that our students are in So you'll hear from our members, we'll hear from, again, from Hedy. Um, I won't pick up a lot of time because we'll let Hedy do the, do the survey on behalf of the Connecticut, um, as a lead, as a lead state across the country, you know, with the national perspective. And then we have, uh, folks from Hartford, Hartford Schools here and also from the Bridge Academy. Uh, I know, uh, they're having conversations about, uh, attendance at charter schools. When charters have come for real, so we wanted to make sure that we included that conversation and that voice in the room as well. So next slide, please, honey. So I'll, I'll certainly set the stage for today's presentation to maximize our time uh with our presenters, but, um, so again, our folks here, you can see them on the screen. Um, I also want to make sure that, uh, the board is aware that this is, this is not just, uh, an initiative that lives in the student support shop. It's a, it's a multi-division, uh, issue, uh, including the performance office, the turnaround office, academics, uh, special education office, communications, um, you know, everywhere, uh, including external partners, including, including our recs, uh, with our lead program and of course, CIRP and a lot of the work that we do as well. Uh, next slide. So again, uh, just a recap, um, when we talk about chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is missing a ten percent of school days. Um, and so that, in the course of the school year is eighteen days, however, it's a rolling number. We talk about enrollment days and, and the number of school days just compared to the number of school days since the start of the school year. Um, so this graph shows the, the number of students trying to be absent over the last ten years, um, and, and also demonstrates the impact of the, of the pandemic, um, at the end. But you'll also see, what I also like to point out is the work that was happening, it continues to happen since, since two thousand and twelve and beyond all the numbers, uh, the work that we were doing with the districts and the work that the search are doing was certainly showing improvements, um, until, essentially until the, the pandemic. Um, with the, um, surge in Omicron variant in January, we had an increase in chronic absenteeism, students. we had an increase in chronic absenteeism students uh, by almost over twenty thousand students. Um, but I'm pleased to say that February and March are both trending back uh, in a good direction with nine thousand fewer students uh, in March than compared to, to January. So again, um, the, the bars um, may be slightly staggering, but it's good to know that it was a specific incident, you know, related to the pandemic uh, and that we're working, we're trending back in the right direction. Um, I also want to mention that we, and I think Hedy will touch on this as well, that we're, I think we're the only state in the nation who's collecting this data monthly throughout, throughout the pandemic, which is absolutely uh, critical for us to be proactive and also reactive. So that when we get to data monthly, we can see exactly what's going on. Um, this is, this is really how we know that, that the Omicron had a significant impact in January uh, because of the number, because we're collecting that data monthly. Uh, next slide. So all this stuff, so just briefly on, on work that we're doing here is wanting to showcase all the work. And I also want to recommend uh, Kari Sullivan-Custer. Kari, please. Uh, many of your, Kari, she leads this work, she does an amazing job. And, and you know, many of the initiatives that are up on the screen are Kari's brain job. Uh, she's a very, very busy person and very dedicated to this work. Um, and so the, uh, learning agent, uh, and attendance program, our lead program was an initiative that was funded through the governor's office, uh, the hallmark of which is home visits. Um, and we quick to point out that these are not home visits like in the old days. We used to go, when the Trinity officer used to go knock on doors. These, these are developing relationships with families to understand what their needs are, understand if the issues related to uh, the students in the fifteen districts at the target, uh, that those issues are related to mental behavioral health issues. Are they related to access to care? Are they related uh, to um, you know, older students needing to work uh, during the pandemic when their, when their parents are there because they've lost their jobs? Um, whether they need access to broadband when we're doing more remote learning. So we're really, uh, we have over two hundred and fifty home visitors. We have thousands and thousands of home visitors uh, under our belt. Uh, and um, maybe another time we can share some of the testimonies from some of the, the home visitors. They're really amazing, they're really amazing stories about how they've connected with their families. They've really been a, a big part of supporting families. Um, so additionally, again, this is the work. We have an advisory team and again, because of the breadth of, of students who are affected by chronic absenteeism, members of that advisory team uh, represent districts um, leading on socialization. And we can send the homeless system uh, leading on uh, English language learner staff on the, on the, on the district level so that we can make sure that we're uh, wrapping around services and understanding the full scope of issues related to absenteeism. Um, Talk Tuesday is a five-weekly virtual discussion um, with districts, with community practice, and also opportunities to share best practices. Um, and again, a number of issues on the screen. I don't want to take too much time, I want to hand it over to Hedy, she will give us her perspective on the work that's happening, has happened and continues to happen in Connecticut. Uh, and, and gauge that against her, the national perspective.
Thank you so much. It is certainly a pleasure and an honor to be here. Attendance Work does operate throughout the country and we have deeply, deeply appreciated the opportunity to partner with Connecticut for over, over a decade. I also appreciate this opportunity because sometimes I even know this working in my own state. We think that what we do in our own state is normal, when actually what you're doing in Connecticut is exemplary. And I want you to have that context. Um, and I also want to appreciate that this work has been a long journey and in my sense is that it is driven by your deep understanding and commitment to educational equity. Because chronic absence is an early warning sign and it contributes to educational inequity. If kids aren't in school, it means they can't benefit from what's being offered. When kids aren't in school, the key is not taking a punitive approach, but understanding what's going on. And what you've been building and putting in place over the decade, past decade, is a system which I brag about to other states when I'm asked what is possible. The data looks alarming, but I do believe uh, Connecticut is doing comparatively better. We're in the midst of pandemic, attendance is going to get worse. But you can make it less worse and, and make sure it doesn't exacerbate the inequities um, in as stra, as challenging ways as we're starting to see throughout the country. So let's go to the next slide. So first of all, I want to applaud Connecticut for really putting in place some of these key ingredients of systemic change, which starts with that shared accountability and, and also looking at actionable data, but having the capacity building to make people, sure people can use it, to engage students and families and educators in a positive way, form strategic partnerships, and ensure that you are using your data to put in place the adequate and equitable resources that will allow all kids to achieve their dreams. Next slide. Your journey actually starts in two thousand and eight. And this is, I, this is quite no credit for this, but you all as a state, I don't know if you realize this, but many states still today do not have a standard definition of a day of attendance. You all decided in two thousand and eight to make it the same definition, which allowed you to actually compare data across districts, across schools. And then actually, uh, you know, that actually informed, I think, some of the work in other states. But that was key. And in addition, you explained what's excused and unexcused. You made sure that people understood what chronic absence was. You passed laws that said if you have above a certain threshold, you have to have an attendance team and a plan. You publish your data. Um, your data is amazing in terms of being able to look over time, look at patterns. You've produced an early intervention, uh, prevention guide and you've been investing in capacity building. And this is all before the pandemic. Um, so let's take a look at what that means. And, and this is another way of cutting the data. And I'm using uh, data from the um, Department of Ed because it allows you to compare your results against the country. So the next slide shows, this is grouping your schools by levels of absenteeism. So I want to call your attention to the green at the far end, which is if you looked in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, which is the first time we had national data, according to Connecticut, you had about a hundred and seventy schools with less, five percent or less, which is a fairly low, very, very, very manageable level of chronic absence. Between, over that course of what, five years, almost, four to five years, you doubled the number of schools with very, with low levels of chronic absence while decreasing the numbers of schools with extreme chronic absence. And that's also key because when you have extreme chronic absence, it's not just the kid who's chronically absent who's feeling the effects of the return in the classroom. It's actually slowing down the education of all the kids around them. Go to the next slide, please. This is for the United States. This is what we saw for the country as a whole. And you actually saw the reverse direction, unfortunately. You saw fewer places having less levels of chronic absence and more places having extreme levels. I really believe this is a testament to how impactful the steps you were taking, starting in two thousand and eight, have been to improving attendance. Next slide. And this positions you in a different way and you were able to build on this with your responses. So you maintained that definition and made sure that not only was it used for in-person attendance, but that it was used for virtual learning, so you could compare consistently. You, as John just mentioned, you collected attendance data monthly, which allows you to take action. Most of this country uses our attendance data like an autopsy. We see it six months after the school year and not while you can still have time to take preventive action. You publicly release that data so any student on the state could see it and say, I think I, I want to understand what's going on and offer my support. So you can engage in those strategic partnerships. Um, the collection of data means the data in Connecticut is, I think, the most trustworthy in the country because you're not waiting to the end of the year when it's too late to commit corrections if someone's been collecting, or it's very hard to make collection, uh, corrections, if someone's been collecting the data inappropriately the whole long time. You've created these virtual learning communities, leveraging the power of technology to create learning. Um, and then you also use this to allocate your resources. Uh, and these are some of the things that John had already spoken to. Next slide. So I just want to also share, this is from last year. This was data when we worked with um, your Accountability Department um, and the sheet, your amazing accountant and your data staff to be able to look at data. Because you coded it by mode of attendance, and by the way, you were one of the very few states that actually coded attendance by mode of learning, you could compare what was happening. And what you could see was that kids, that's a light blue line, who are in remote learning were having double the levels of chronic absence. But you could also see really high levels in the early grades and also in ninth grade. This informs your action. Next slide. You also could, you could activate that data to see that the highest elevated rates were being really driven by what was happening with your Black and your Hispanic students, particularly the early grade and the ninth grade, which again, informed your lead, has informed your other programming. Next slide. And then this is the data um, that you currently have, not yet the March data, which I think has just come out. And it's showing, um, just give a little more illustration to what John was showing earlier. Um, and again, you can see that the, and this is true across the country. The kids with the biggest challenges have been, been the most affected. Um, next slide. So I want to give you a little national context on this. So pre-pandemic, across the country, you had about eight million or sixteen percent of your kids chronically absent. Again, that is higher than what you were seeing here in Connecticut. Um, but now what we're seeing is almost double that level. Um, and if you, the, the only national data we have is parent uh, survey that by McKinsey was suggesting about two point seven times higher. So this is all about being comparatively better because again, with a pandemic, chronic absence has increased. Um, I'm going to keep going to the next slide. So I want to talk for a moment about what we can do. Um, and you'll see and hear from the presentations after me that you're really applying these concepts here in Connecticut. So next slide. The first thing we need to do is make sure that we're not just taking on punitive action, which you've really been amazing at a state as emphasizing prevention, but ground solutions and understanding of the factors that cause chronic absence. These were actually buckets of reasons that were true before the pandemic and they're still true now. There's barriers, aversion, disengagement, and then there's misconceptions. Next slide. And if you think about barriers, um, some that, a lot of the barriers, the external barriers have existed, truly exacerbated. A chronic acute illness, you're in a pandemic, but also kids staying home for, to take on family responsibilities, trauma, poor transportation, the lack of predictable routines, things like, I don't think the lack of access to tech prior to the pandemic would have been as much of an issue as it is now. Next slide. And then when you think about aversion and coming back to school this year was truly challenging with kids not having interacted with other kids for over a year and a half um, and uh, even seeing social and peer challenges. And I think we're going to continue to have to grapple with that um, as a society and in our schools, which are at the front lines of dealing with it, with our pandemic. Next slide.
Just on, on that slide.
Yes.
What does school refusal mean?
So we are hearing a lot more reports of where um, staff, it, it is a, it's connected to mental health issues, where kids actually feel so much anxiety about going to school that they don't want to go to school. Uh, and I'm hearing that um, both uh, across the economic background, um, you know, both of higher and lower socioeconomic. Uh, but it's something that was true before the pandemic and I'm hearing about it much more now. And you have to approach it with some strategies around dealing with anxiety, kids' anxiety. So the next um, bucket is disengagement. And I think the fact that the pandemic has not only affected absenteeism among our kids, but among our school staff, has really made it challenging to build those relationships that really support kids coming to school. Um, these are then factors that are exacerbated. Next slide. Um, and then there are still the misconceptions where kids and families don't really understand uh, how uh, attendance can affect their academic performance. So they can lose track of how much they actually miss school. Next slide. So what this means is really the critical importance of taking an all-hands-on-deck team approach to rebuilding the positive conditions for learning uh, in our schools. And that requires both our educators, our community agencies, our public agencies, making sure that schools are physically healthy and emotional, physically and emotionally healthy in faith. Making sure every child feels a sense of belonging, connection and support. Making sure that whatever mode of learning is happening, it feels academically challenging and engaging and that there is adult and student wellbeing and emotional competence to build those relationships that support all of these conditions for learning. Next slide. And this is really about working across silos to invest in a multi-tiered approach that begins with prevention and those foundational whole-school supports, that relationship building, that engaged curriculum, that healthy school climate, um, that creates the engagement that makes kids want to show up to school and then allows it to, when you're starting to say methods, things like, um, you've missed too much school, we're worried about you. You need to be in school because you'll learn, that the kids will respond. Because schools have to be a place where kids and families want to be for attendance mapping to, to be effective. So with that, I will turn it back to John.
Now, may I just, uh, always interrupt. Uh, but this, as you know, is a, is a passion. And I just really want to take the time to publicly thank Hedy. A national expert in this work, would become a thought partner. And I still remember two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when I called her, I was sitting in my car in my garage, uh, because we, I felt like we were in crisis and we needed to, to this support. And to this day continues to, she's on the West Coast, uh, to sync our calendars to sometimes just say, what's going on across the country? What can we do here in Connecticut? And so Hedy, thank you for continuing to be there for, for Connecticut and, and for us.
My pleasure.
Thank you. So now we're running here from our schools directly. And I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Torres Arrieta, Superintendent Harvard Public Schools, and Yvette Avila, the issue of schools.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to join you, to share literally about our journey. If we can go to the next slide, please. And I tell you, right friends, we know that chronic absenteeism has been exacerbated by the pandemic and uh, right, this is not a phenomenon, certainly not in our public schools. And it is not new in communities uh, that are traditionally under-resourced. So we have begun actually doing this work years ago when we took a critical look at our attendance data and realized that there were just, there were gaps in our existing systems, programs and supports that really weren't designed to meet the needs of the whole student. And we identified that chronic absenteeism, specifically in middle school, was one for early warning indicators for students in our district to be off track through graduate. So we convened our community, we declared chronic absenteeism a crisis in the city of Hartford. And we developed awareness across our city around the impact on academic, psychosocial, familial and economic outcomes. And then we began to, over the years, establish conditions for improvement internally. We met attendance data systems, tools, our home visiting portal call. And we launched our teams at the district level and across all of our thirty-nine schools that were supported then uh, by our Equity Center budget model that really dedicated support, dedicated support to our schools. To the education specialists, for example, family and community support providers. See your point, Hedy, right, this holistic approach. And then externally, we did expand some of our partnerships, specifically our community schools model for strategic partnerships to deliver those wraparound supports to mitigate not only barriers that are submitted for experiencing, but their families as well, all to identify those root causes. This is all pre-COVID and while we gas did widen those systemic approaches to quickly identify who causes, doing a targeted outreach to our families and working with our community partners to remove those barriers, actually sustained this work um, throughout those quick cycles of improvement throughout COVID and an example. So we started this year with fifteen percent of our students, I don't know, so just, you know, funded by that. That's twenty-six hundred students that we couldn't find, that were not coming to school. By week two, we're.
By week two, we, we had reduced that by sixty percent, by week five, by ninety percent. So from twenty-six hundred students to a hundred and eighty-four students by week five. And after thirty-eight home visits as far as this year, thirty-eight hundred visits, uh, right, we're now looking at twelve students that we just cannot find. Um, so that's just a quick example of how quick and significant of a shift we made and it wouldn't have been possible without this integrated systemic approach. Chief Iwada.
Next slide please. And so we have continuous improvement cycles at all levels of our organization, um, starting at school level, the district level, and then at the academy level. And the continuous improvement cycles identify fifteen root causes that have, uh, that we have pointed barriers to our students attending schools every single day. These systemic barriers we've identified and have begun to address. But I want to give you an example. And one of the examples I really want to list is implementing a half day. And we implemented half days last year due to the pandemic and the different learning modalities that teachers were facing. This came about from feedback from teachers needing additional support to implement those learning models. And after close analysis, there has been a consistent slower attendance rate every single half day. And after analyzing that, this year, um, we realized that we had unintended consequences and caused a barrier specifically at the district. And so we have addressed that by this next coming year, we have altered the number of half days and have, um, we will have different ways to support the teachers. So that we will continue to support teachers, but not at the cost of the hardship that families have shared with us of the half days that have been implemented to address what had happened during the pandemic.
So this is a, um, quick snapshot of, you know, this holistic approach to meeting the needs of the whole student from individualized recognition to support plans to the school level campaign. And of course, our home visitation continues. Uh, behavior of support has been at the center of our response by our partners in our schools, again, supporting our schools and their families. Uh, the extended learning enrichment opportunities and a true deep and focus on trauma. Um, with regards to communication, that is something that we had heard loud and clear from our families that was actually something that worked for our families. How we amplified and, and had many, many more communications. Uh, so we continue to frequent communications to families about progress towards our attendance goals, not only our annual, our monthly goals, or weekly goals. In Hartford Public Schools, we monitor and we look and we talk about the chronic absenteeism data on a weekly basis from the board all the way uh, to our classrooms and our schools. Um, and just like we do with our instructional walk, we have our culture and climate walks that also have informed the school-wide support, like those added mental health, um, and adding five more schools to become uh, community schools. Uh, and this, you know, as we referenced, I didn't reference that it wouldn't be possible without the additional um, center funding that we have, we have gotten. Next slide.
This is a snapshot of our attendance and we started the school year, we were on track to meet our target. Um, August on and January happened and that was us to have a back plan. Um, we are now going towards um, reaching our target again and we're back on track. So we're seeing a decrease in our numbers of time absenteeism. So one of the ways that we are going to maintain the engagement that we are bringing, we have momentum of is really looking at our eighth grade, that transition rate is an area that has, you know, been very challenging to maintain and decrease time absenteeism. And so one of the things that we are doing is we are having summer support for those transition rates, right? And, and having high school visits earlier, getting students excited about going time from that eighth grade, being excited, knowing what to expect, meeting teachers that have been seen the following year, looking, having access to the building. It is really um, developing a sense of belonging right even before the new school year. Um, teachers and teachers are going to meet the students as well as having families have the opportunity to meet teachers prior to the beginning of the new year also. Um, and then we, we, we know that registration, during registration, there was a barrier around physicals and having families not either having healthcare or not having opportunities or being on a long waiting list um, due to the pandemic, there's been long lists, get a doctor's appointment even. And so in order to address that barrier, we are having the opportunity to offer parents the, have a physical on spot right after the actual registration, but also having clinics open over the summer so that they can get their physicals and be ready to start school on time.
And lastly, from a systemic perspective, so we are actually going to begin assessing our return on investment with respect to our uh, extra funded strategies, like our database, like our MAPS, the receipt intercession. And we are also looking to reimagine our student engagement department, not saying that it is not working, but we are at a point where we've been sustaining this work. And so it's time for us to go deeper in how we can make it even better and, and have a broader impact. And lastly, we're going to continue to analyze and proactively respond to our data, again, on a weekly basis. We recently unveiled our community-facing data dashboards that we're going to spend this spring and summer providing families and our community partners on capacity so that they can interact with, uh, you know, use from the dashboards, really understand the data. And again, how they can get closer to us, we're going to get closer to our families and the community with regard to systematically identifying uh, those barriers and collectively having responsibility to address uh, chronic absenteeism and student engagement. So I will end by just expressing gratitude to, to uh, our team back at the district. Uh, it figures out the current clarity, shifts between our district, our schools, obviously our thirty-nine leaders, our teachers, our staff, and our parents and our students who are always letting us know what's working and what isn't working, what we can make better. Thank you.
And now we'll shift, uh, we'll turn it over to here from Rachel Allison from the Bridge Academy for the charter school perspective.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I'm Rachel Allison, I'm the founder and principal at Bridge Academy. That's our school. This is our twenty-fifth year, by the way, we are one of the first cohorts of charter schools. So you're all invited to our twenty-fifth anniversary celebration barbecue on June fourth. Um, so this is some data, thank you for, to Kari for so much, including doing this together. Um, you can see that we're kind of, we're the red, so we're actually going a bit against the trend. Our chronic absenteeism has dropped these last couple of years. And I'm going to explain how we work to create this, um, these changes. Next slide please. So probably the biggest change was just a shift in mindset. Uh, we did a lot of education, reading, learning, um, around what works with changing attendance. Um, and what we learned is punitive measures don't work. Um, and we had been using those uh, in the beginning. Um, so for example, students who, this is a certain number of days, are taking all the ungrades in their classes. And until their attendance improved, uh, they'd have to come and kind of talk to us about why uh, they weren't coming to school. And it, it just wasn't a pleasant process for them. Um, we would deny kids who were late breakfast, our intentions were good. You know, we were hoping, well, maybe that'll be the motivation they need to get to school on time. Um, so they know they'd be fed, but that was not working clearly, you can see the numbers. So through some climate training, um, distorted practice training, I do want to shout out Kari and her team, they do amazing work around education. I think we've gone to every workshop and training they've offered and learned a lot. So we changed to a more relational rather than punitive approach. So uh, basically my answer is if a child isn't doing well in any area, whether it's attendance or grades or behavior, it's because uh, they don't have the skills. And so we need to help them learn those transferable skills. Um, we also learned that you just, as Hedy said, you want to create an environment, a place where kids want to be. School isn't always easy for a lot of kids, it can be a really challenging place. So you can understand people want to avoid, avoid that challenge. So you have to make it a place where in addition to the challenge, there are things going on that they want to participate in. So we work really hard now to be intentional around connection activities. We create a connection activity for the, the next year, so we know exactly what things are happening and we can build on that every year. Um, a lot of these are kind of boilerplate connection activities, assemblies, things like that. But I put a bold some things that we're doing a little differently to address attendance and connection. We have pre-pas and tampons in every girl's bathroom because that can be a barrier to attendance for some kids. Um, we even sell the washer and dryer for all families and kids to use because having clean clothes, we've learned, is sometimes the reason kids don't come to school. Um, we have a voucher program so kids can get free or very reduced price haircuts and styling because self-esteem is a barrier sometimes to coming to school. Uh, we, well, before the pandemic, offered all students free lunch and breakfast. Um, and we have changed the mindset, we don't replenish children in any way for being late for access. Um, as the student is, comes into school, they just get a happy greeting, we'll ask why they were late. But other than that, we offer them breakfast and tell them how glad we are to see them. That is a change. Next slide please. So we also uh, have worked to use our staff to invest our dollars to get kids in the building. Um, so we have a monthly attendance data, it's about weekly. Um, the, or represented from our whole school team on the attendance data. So the nurse comes, the attendance coordinator comes, our secretary comes, our social workers, special education teachers. Um, so everyone has anything to do with attendance, is at those meetings. Um, we, the, uh, my team and our attendance coordinator also meets weekly just to go over some key management things and talk about kids who are struggling. At the top of all our attendance is the Edsite, I guess that's Kari, the attendance link. Um, so all members of those teams can, with a click of a button, know exactly where we stand in terms of all of our attendance numbers. Um, and we have multi-tiered, as most of our, not only an intervention plan, but we have all of the kids in tier two or three um, in a plan and um, update that and document uh, what we're doing to support them and the changes in their attendance. So uh, communication is really key in, in making the changes we've made. Uh, staffing is also really important. So um, we, we, one of our social workers uh, says what's predictable is preventable. And I think everyone predicted that coming back from the pandemic, uh, mental health and social emotional issues would be a challenge. Uh, so we um, keep some hiding around that. So an attendance coordinator to focus specifically on attendance. Um, previously was really just kind of a school secretary who did that. Uh, we hired a social emotional, we've always, um, should say, we've always uh, prioritized social emotional learning. For a school of just under three hundred kids, we had two social workers and a school guidance counselor. Uh, so those ratios of student to support is much lower in our school than always has been. But coming back from the pandemic, we knew we probably need even more support than that. So we did hire a social emotional learning coordinator who uh, worked uh, mostly to teach kids transferable skills around how to manage mental health, stress, anxiety. Um, we hired extra support staff because we knew, again, predictable, preventable, uh, that kids uh, struggled during the pandemic with their learning and they would need more support, particularly with math, all of our assessments showed that. Um, and we were able to uh, create a few second positions. So these are full-time teachers who took on the extra challenge of being our climate coordinators and family engagement. Um, and I want to echo what Hartford said was that, um, one of the great silver linings of the pandemic, if there are, have been any, is that we can see how we can really move the dial on attendance with appropriate funding. Because all of this costs quite a bit of money. Next slide please. Um, so just to use that to address uh, the barriers, everyone knows exist for attendance. Um, transportation is a big one, and there are many, many uh, transportation issues. Um, not just getting a kid on a bus, but um, so what if we can get into school sometimes with harder kids? So last summer, we piloted an Uber account, uh, and that's been really successful. So families know that we have, we have anyone to take advantage of. Families know often a parent will go to work and then the child misses the bus for whatever reason and they can't get to school because mom or dad are not there. So they know that, that the parents can reach out to us. We'll send them a, um, digital permission form and as soon as that is signed, we send an Uber to the, the home. Uh, we've uh, done that eighty-five times as of this morning since our pilot last summer. And that's been really successful. Um, we also now will purchase one in Bushford, I think a lot of districts, kids, um, we don't have school buses, the, the district ended uh, uh, school buses for high schools several years ago. So kids get to do bus passes, but anybody who um, lives within two miles of the school does not get one. So we have families who, for whatever reason, that is a real barrier. So for example, some of them have, you know, young girls that they just do not feel are safe walking through some of their neighborhoods, the two miles to school. So we, any, the only one that comes to us and says this is a, a concern for us, we will purchase them a city bus pass. Um, as I said earlier, we use the one hiring to make sure kids have the academic support they need to extra adults in math classrooms in particular, and other classrooms as well. Um, we changed our whole schedule to add a what I need period. Um, we added uh, a few tier-two intervention programs around reading and math. Um, communication, um, that looks a little redundant, but uh, we, we communicate often, I should say. We also learned from one of um, Kari's uh, workshops that parents are more likely to read communication sent on the weekend. So all of our emails and texts go out on Saturday now. Um, social emotional learning, we're, kind of said already, we, we hired uh, to ensure that our kids are getting the support and, and um, instruction they need around mental health. Um, and uh, just during the pandemic, I think one of the reasons we were allowed, we, we lowered our uh, chronic absence is that transportation wasn't a barrier, kids could do school from their bed and many did. Um, but also we were relentless. I think that's one word I would use about our approach to remote learning. So um, not only did we take attendance to keep her remote, but um, we had all the children go guardian, they all had one-on-one devices from Bridge Academy. So we would scroll through guardian many times a day. And so even if a child was marked present, but then we saw that they logged off, we would call home um, and get them logged on. And I just need to give our families a shout out, not once did a parent say, why are you bothering me? I've called some families three times a day and they were always appreciative. Um, we had parents leave work to come to school to get a hotspot, his wifi had gone down at home, rush back to home to get their child a hotspot so they could do their work and then go back to work. Um, yeah, so we had amazing family support through the whole pandemic as well. Um, and I think I am done and open to any questions. Oh, sorry, yes, okay. So thank you. Started this year. Um, so thank you again, this is a Kari initiative. Um, they um, really have been kind of pushing the idea of parent teacher home visits in the state. And we embraced that and started that last summer and it was wonderful and we are continuing with that. Um, uh, we had an initiative, every single child will get at least one positive phone call home or a social emotional learning coordinator, uh, just reminds teachers of that and um, ensures that that's happening. I don't know about you, but I never got a positive phone call home about my children. It might say more about my kids than their schools, but I think families appreciate that. And um, the uh, Community of Practice Family Engagement State Team has really been uh, supporting schools and creating focus groups. Um, and we're embracing that, that is restored and distorted is doing things with students rather than to them. And focus groups really allow us to hear uh, what they need and, and their concerns and, and address that. So I think I'm actually done now. All right, thank you.
So just lastly, I want to highlight a few things going forward for the department. Um, the summer enrichment and innovation opportunities, uh, you probably have seen them since they've gone out. The, the applications are due back to us um, mid-May. Obviously, summer enrichment, summer activities are an excellent way to keep kids connected uh, throughout the summer and ready for coming back in. That's a, uh, at least an eighteen-dollar program. We also have after-school grants uh, in the amount of nine million dollars that will be operating over the summer. Uh, so a lot of work happening to keep kids connected in addition to the lead home visits that are continuing to happen. Um, and then finally, uh, one bit from the performance office about student-level uh, trinity data. Um, we haven't collected trinity data by, on a student level uh, before this year. District would tend us to a total number of students who are trinity. Uh, and now we'll have student-level trinity data. Uh, the, the interesting thing about trinity is if you're uh, absent for four days in a, in a thirty-day period, you're trinity, you can just never get out of being trinity. Once you're trinity, you're always trinity, which is different than chronic absence, right? If you improve your attendance over the course of the year, uh, then you cease to be chronic pre-absence. So um, looking at uh, both of those uh, parameters as well. So with that, uh, Commissioner, I'll turn it back over to you and uh,
I, I just wanted to add, and so thank you Superintendent, uh, Leslie Garth, George Arrieta and Chief Avila, uh, and for sharing Hartford's journey. Uh, you know, Hartford, so for a large urban town, uh, they, we always get information, our query about what's happening there and you never hear the hard work and the story behind it. So appreciate being able to hear that and, and the charter school, uh, Rachel, the work that's happened there that we've heard here. But I just want to, and I know the board is going to have questions, but I want to thank the board. Uh, because the attendance definition came to the board in two thousand eight. Uh, we did a lot of this work in policy committee. And, and the guidance documents that we talk about, that is nationally recognized, came to the board. So uh, and then the, the board goal about making sure we address non-academic barriers, one of the strategies specifically uh, was around addressing attendance and specifically and specifically chronic absence and keeping that in the forefront. So I just really wanted to bring that back, that I do believe a part of the success we see in our strategy is being able to work together with our, with our board, uh, and with your support for the work that's happening and the agency working across systems. Uh, and that is the systems approach that we've talked about here. And of course, then using that to support our district. So I really just wanted to thank, thank you all for the presentation and for the board, and frankly, to hear from others outside of us. I know we come in and we say that a lot, but, uh, but that you hear from others that this work has been recognized and, and we're really making a difference, uh, and there's still a lot of work to do. And, and we recognize that, but that's important. And Kari Sullivan, I always call her the boots of the ground, uh, that is there that everyone can call. So appreciate that and to let you also know that our research collaborative, uh, when they presented to you the next on the docket for their research is the LEAP program. So they, we have researchers who are now looking at our LEAP program, uh, so that we can know exactly the outcomes that we're getting there. So those are all the things I really wanted to add. Uh, I don't care.
Wonderful. I, uh, want to add my thanks for, um, this bold and complete presentation. Thank you for the national perspective. It is always good to see how we, we, we always think we're number one. We always want to see how we stack up, um, from, from others' perspectives. And thank you so much for the on-the-ground Hartford and the Bridge Academy, um, perspective. Board members, questions?
Probably say the same thing. You know, the Commissioner Russell Zucker has been the tireless advocate and champion of this. For, for those of us who've been on the board, probably, I can remember every time people come in and talk about that and how much of an impact it makes on that child's achievement in school. If they're not there, they can't learn. Yeah, I remember that. And, uh, you know, you, you, you actually have a na-, you've been nationally recognized for the work you've done, and it's been terrific to watch you and how you just, you, when the commissioner gets hold of something, feeling like over there. And this is one of those things that just really shows the tenacity that, uh, the commissioners had in addressing something which is so important to the, to the learning and, and the teaching and learning of the kids. Thank you so much.
I'm going to echo that a little bit too, and I know, um, our commissioners, this has always been so important to her. And I, um, actually was exposed to this before I came on the board because she came with attendance works to Meriden, and I remember that. And as a classroom teacher diving into, um, this like every day, it became sort of a once-a-month type of thing. By the time I left my career in Meriden, it was every day. And it was, as teachers that, you know, you've got the call, and I love that she teaches your secretaries on your group. But I think that is so crucial, um, because we would often get the call, you know, so-and-so is here, don't ask why, just load in. And so it was our secretary that would, you know, debrief them, sometimes de-escalate them. And it's so important. You don't think of those folks sometimes when we do this work. I, I just wanted to point that out. Um, I do have a few, I have a question actually for both, um, because both of you refer to the EdStar fund. Are you, do you have a concern of sustainability of all these teacher-driven mindset ideas that she put in and that she feels sustain, especially when I agree with both the staff that she has hired?
Yes, the EdStar, yes. Uh, so, you know, mindset, we continue to work on. Free and, and will do so post the funding. Uh, but it is the additional staffing rates that have in some of our schools with the highest, you know, chronic absenteeism levels. We have multiple association specialists. We know that will not be sustainable path, um, to funding.
And Dr. George, if I have you, I think that's just one thing I circled, which when you were talking about, because I'm not sure really what it is, and the climate and cultural ones, can you share? Like, what is that? When you have, I'm familiar with the others, but I never seen one.
So it's similar to our instructional walks. We do have several competencies and expectations that we want to see across our school. Our students engage with one another. What's your wall? Um, you know, with regards to welcoming our students, where are, when and how are these sort of circles happening? How are our K-two students experiencing the second step curriculum or social emotional learning? Um, and treat it just like we do with instructional walks. We go in, we do very specific mindset around what is, that we're looking, and then we identify the data terms so that we can go back and identify support for the school, the staff, and obviously for the student. And she probably thought, you know, we want to expand on that.
So what we're really looking for and trying to feel, trying to, when you walk in the building, you have a certain feeling, is the really conscious of belonging and just love that is permeating through the building. Um, and then we provide support and feedback so that if any improvements that need to happen, that we do that collaboratively, collectively, um, behalf of our students and families. Also measures, the welcoming of vibrant parents as well, and our families to come into school and participate in the active members of the school community.
Yes, that's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
After that thorough presentation, and, uh, uh, somebody mentioned home visits. And, uh, John, you mentioned two hundred and fifteen home visitors. Are those people in the State Department of Education that, like, surgery asked?
Uh, no, they're either, uh, rest employees or district employees.
Oh, okay.
So they're either set up participating in the LEAP program.
Okay. Well, a, a teacher whom I know took it upon himself to make home visits. And is that something that teachers do these days?
Can I offer, um, so you have two things going on in Connecticut. One is the parent teacher home visit, which actually pre-existed, um, uh, the, um, LEAP program. And that model, um, actually starts with teachers, uh, visiting kids in families ideally before school year starts and then having multiple interactions. So one of the things I wanted to say is the home visiting model that you all have adopted, there are lots of home visiting models. Then there are, it might be better home visiting models. A better home visiting model is where it's not just one visit, it's building multiple interactions over time. Um, and with the LEAP home visiting model, um, because you recognize that, uh, teachers, uh, and this is again, Kari and John and others in your, that really seeing that teachers were exhausted and tired by the end of the, that last year, I suspect they're even more exhausted and tired this year. So that you need to use your data to add an extra layer of support to do home visits that started last summer and that would have multiple times. That is unusual. Having multiple home visits, recognizing that relationship building doesn't happen just because you go visit a family once.
But because you sustain the relationship over time and that will engage them, that is one of the unique aspects. And if you ever want inspiration, I have to say, we personally get inspiration that LEAP, um, home visitors, that, um, this is again, Kari and the rest working together, um, they have them share with each other success stories. I know there are some of the most inspiring success stories where they have gotten kids back, gotten kids, um, uh, to graduate. It, it's just truly phenomenal. And it's because of that relentlessness that you talked about. Uh, and that is not always happening, unfortunately, but in, when people face trauma, sometimes the first time you talk to them, they won't, they won't respond.
So I do just think all of this speaks to creating a system of relationship building with families, right? Whether it's creating a, a welcoming school at the beginning, having a culture and climate that families feel welcome, students feel wel-, welcome, having an engaging curriculum, right? An interesting engaging curriculum that students, um, can take advantage of. Letting families know like, hey, we have a washer dryer. You can certainly use that on Saturdays if that's, if that's a barrier. That's, that's building a relationship, you know, with those families to understand, we hear you. We're trying to, uh, create opportunities for you to be engaged in our school community, and we're here to help you. Um, you know, school breakfast and lunch, obviously. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. Again, we're, we're helping to, uh, feed your kids. Again, taking some of those off of the shoulders of families to say, we can help you in these areas. And that, and that's relationship building throughout every aspect of engaging family.
I, I wanted to, uh, well, first, I, I want to thank you for the work you all do. Um, you know, it's, it's been very tough, especially during the COVID times, and it's not over. COVID is not over. So I'm curious to know, um, I'm sure there's discussion if, if cases continue to escalate, right? We're coming up with more illnesses when it comes to our children, as you hear, the news, right? Uh, and so therefore, it's, it's going to impact, obviously, their access of education. But I'm also curious to know if, um, you know, if there is a contingency plan in terms of everything, because, because you did talk about learning hybrid, learning remotely. Uh, there may be possibilities that that may have, we may have to go reverse. We never know. So I, I'm curious to know, what are your thoughts about this?
Well, I think, one of the things we did, not one, one of the major things we learned during the pandemic is that, um, while remote learning was necessary during the pandemic, it was certainly not equal to in-person learning. Um, we, the department did an entire study to look at that. And students, in, every, every student, regardless of demographic, uh, lost ground if they, the more remote learning they did. So that's a, that's a critical piece. But I think what, what we're creating here, what the districts are creating, what we're creating is, is completely wraparound support, right? Wrapping around the students, the home visiting, understanding what's going on in that family. Again, as I mentioned, are they, are they remote, were they remote learning? Were they not engaged because they didn't have broadband activity? Well, we got them broadband activity. You know, the state invested a lot of money in broadband activity. Um, were there issues where the, the high school student had to work or take care of their younger sibling? No, understanding and connecting them with, with social services supports right in their communities to understand, like, hi, this is how we do it. And again, as, as Heather mentioned, not only the multiple, uh, home visits, but the first visit is, doesn't have to be a trinity officer on the counter door, and this is a problem, right? So you say, hey, we're just, we're, want to come out and say hi and see what's going on. And then, I mean, if you saw some of the testimonials from both the families and, and the, the home visitors, I mean, the families were, were in tears when their home visitors couldn't come out for the time that they were supposed to come out. And maybe they're inviting them in, they're having meals with them. It's, it's really a big program and, and understanding of this.
Can I offer up another, um, aspect of this? I think it's thinking about using our technology and virtual interactions in addition to in-person learning. The place, and, and the state, again, you all have invested heavily into the one-on-one technology, and I encourage continued, and that can also be partnerships and business and everything else. The truth is, if you can't figure out how to interact on a computer, you're probably not going to be equipped to achieve in the twenty-first century economy, right? So that's a good thing. But for example, with, um, what I've seen in some places, that this is not, is that, um, they've actually, when, when, uh, when everyone went back to in-person learning, they actually gave back, they had families turn in there, this is not Connecticut, turned back in their computers. And I thought, what are you thinking about? But, because it's not just that kids would be learning from that, it's to even maintain the conversation with families. And the LEAP one, this is, didn't all happen in person. Some of them happened virtually. If families were concerned about COVID, you, you do it virtually, or you do it outside, or you... But the connection, and, uh, if you heard what Rachel was doing, was she was making sure that when students were quarantined, they still had access to a virtual option to stay involved. So I do think in-person learning is essential. Kids need that relationship building. They need that connection. But we also have to find ways to use technology. So it's, uh, it's not, uh, it's not a shift to back to what the full-on remote learning. Um, that, that actually, I think we haven't found a way to make that work well. But we can be more creative about using technology to enhance what happens in, in-person learning and, and address those contingency plans.
A good point, good point, because, and I'm first here. You, you brought up a good point, because even for our African-American and Latino students, we need to have ongoing training for parents and, and their, and guardians, because they don't all have their parents, right? They may be raised without a widow, with a grandma, right? And, and, uh, and extended family members. So it's important that there is ongoing training when it comes to this technology so that they don't miss out on the ball. So I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you. I got credit from Eric.
More of a comment. Um, first, Commissioner, thank you for responding in, in this way. I really appreciate this and, and appreciate you just championing, uh, these children and these families who are experiencing more than chronic absenteeism. And secondly, I want to thank you all for, for, for coming because this is near and dear to my heart as well. Um, and what I think is most important is that schools and schools, districts are showing and demonstrating to folks who are struggling, um, that you see them and you care about them. And that's what this is really all about, that people feel cared for and that they, they, they're seen. Because, as we know, it's often said that the pandemic has really revealed things to folks who have, um, about the have-nots. But the other part of that is the have-nots now know that they've been exposed as, as, as being a have-not. Because it's very easy, living in poverty, trust me, I know, to, to, um, dress your poverty in a way, not literally, me, dress your poverty in a way where you, you can act like you're not poor. But when the world knows that you're poor, it deepens the stigma of your situation and your condition. And so, and then that stigma is manifested in schools. And so to the extent that you all can continue to work with this and mitigate the barriers, um, not just around chronic absenteeism, but, but their, their, the depth of life, um, that's really, really important. And so I just want to thank you for, uh, giving us an on-the-ground view of, of what is really going on. So thank you.
So well said, and thank you, um, uh, Mr. Clements. It was one of your inquiries, I think, that really led to us getting this opportunity to begin here. And so thank you. Thank you for your leadership. We can be on today, you know, on this, um, and we'd love to, but we are going to need to move along. Thank you so much for being with us today, um, and we look forward to being together again.
Thank you.
Let's move to item eleven B, the, um, Connecticut Computer Science Plan Update. And just on that, after this, we'll turn to the airfield to get, uh, and the regional balance plan.
We're here today to provide an update on the Connecticut Computer Science State Plan, which was adopted by the State Board of Education about two years ago. This plan demonstrated a strong commitment to broaden access, equity, and participation in computer science education across the state. To speak to this, um, I have my colleague here, Dr. Melissa Hickey, as well as Sharon Merrimah, who's ready to speak to, um, the update. Next slide.
Thank you. So, um, many of you recall, we did an update a year or two ago now. Um, so we're here today to highlight the state plan that the floor did approve to move forward, bringing together the state around computer science. The state plan has many elements to it of areas of support, including, um, guidance to districts around computer science and bringing attention to computer science. So here you can see on this slide a few of the things that we have accomplished. One of which is the course guide, which is to help, uh, districts in guiding students with pathways and what courses would qualify, coding, et cetera. Um, also talking about how computer science does count for the nine credits in STEM pathway. The lieutenant governor, I'm sorry, it's actually the governor's computer challenge with the lieutenant. It's the lieutenant governor's computer computing challenge under the office of the Governor's Women and Girl Initiative. They have a committee there. So it is a tongue twister, my apologies. Um, Lieutenant Governor, really, she says this is her baby, and she is excited about this, and we have been the force behind it with Jen Mitchell, who you had met here previously. So, um, slide please. Another aspect of the state plan is around professional learning and ensuring that those who have direct contact with our students, who are the teachers and administrators, are getting the support they need so that they understand, um, what they are teaching and what computer science entails. This oftentimes means that students are physically acting it out. If you go into elementary schools, you will see children moving two squares forward, three squares over. And all of this is part of actually, how do we code and what does this mean? Um, Shannon will be talking more about this in a while. So next slide, please. We've also worked on, um, very closely with our talent office, we have worked on cross- We've also worked on, um, very closely with our town's office, we have worked on cross endorsements. And how do we have teachers who are in front of children who are knowledgeable? And this also is this, an expanding access for students to have teachers and courses. We have this unique cross endorsement for computer science that we at the State Department, um, created. And it also, um, trying to see what else we've done here. I know that your time is short, so I'm trying to condense it and go quickly here. Um, but about passing, they can be, they can pass the test about content assessment. And this is computer science practice. So that's another layer. Because currently to teach computer science, you, we, you need to, it's basically, people can teach computer science as long as it's in the grade of their certificate. So what we've tried to do is to put in some support for people so that they can actually become experts around this. One of which, like I said, is with the process. The other is professional learning and having these different courses advanced. This may be familiar to you. This is from code.org and how they rate the, uh, the states, the different states. So only a few years ago, Connecticut did not have any of the nine policies in place. However, the State Department realized the need. You as a board recognized the importance of computer science. And because of our coordinated efforts, we could hit, at first we had three. And then we had the seven. So, you know, we're really, we are moving along. We are moving along. We're very proud of the advancement that we are making.
What's the difference between the R, the green checks and the yellow checks?
Um, so the green, so four. I'm trying to remember what the green and the yellow. Oh, the yellow were the first. So the yellow were the first. We had first, the, um, computer science was a core graduation with the STEM. And then also, um, creating the state plan, which is what we all did here. So now we are a leader instead of a follower for it. But then there's always more to do, right? We never stop at what we're doing. We're always looking forward, looking forward. Now, part of the work with the state plan was to partner. And we purposely partnered with Shannon and Ready CT on a committee, which is DM or CT. We co-chair this committee. We work together on this committee. And, um, we asked Shannon to come here today to talk about the partnership and priorities. So I'm going to shift over to our partner.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, so nice to see everyone this afternoon. Uh, Shannon Merrimah is Ready CT, also formerly of the CSE. So this is a little bit of a homecoming. Very exciting to hear. Uh, so as Melissa said, we are partnered with working on the CS for CT steering committee, which is charged with operationalizing the state computer science plan, which you all adopted and approved. And so the goal is to not have that plan sit on a shelf, but very much infuse it with life and, and act on those, uh, next steps. And so I think what we've identified as a committee is just opportunities to continue to move the needle and continue to be a leader in the computer science arena. Uh, the reason Ready CT is so involved and engaged in this is that we are an organization, nonprofit, that's partnered with the business community and thinking about how do we best set students up for success as they prepare for the future of work. And as you can imagine, computer science education is vital to that. Seventy percent of all new jobs that are coming on the market have some basis in computer science. And so if we're not building those skills within, within the students, uh, in the K-12 system, then we're going to be leaving them, um, short, shorthanded when they graduate from, uh, the K-12 system. And our real focus as a, as a committee is thinking about access to and participation in computer science, relative especially to underrepresented student groups, specifically, uh, female students and students of color. So a lot of our conversations focus on that. Um, in terms of continued priorities, as Melissa said, the Lieutenant Governor's Computing Challenge is a big success. It does draw on a lot of students. I think we want to keep, again, making sure that we're accessing all, getting this in front of all students and setting them up for the ability to take part in this. Um, and we know that more work to do just to project plan and make sure that that's a really sustainable initiative from year to year. Um, the CS Plan expansion, which is the sacred, hard, and worthy effort to focus on professional development for teachers and build the capacity of teachers to teach this important content area, uh, we just want to be able to do more of that. I mean, so funding, so funding is a theme that runs through all this because funding is what's going to allow the expansion of efforts like the Computer Challenge and the professional development. And then for the, um, for the steering committee, in addition to funding, we continue to look at policy levers. Are there areas where we could keep pushing on the policy opportunities? And then we're also talking about a public relations campaign and kind of marketing and communicating out to the community and to parents and, and students about, uh, this important area. Because there, there isn't maybe a lot of awareness about how much this is a, a growth opportunity. And, and it's really exciting and compelling for students. You get students in front of a coding challenge and they come to life and it's very project-based and, and, um, engaging. Um, so the last thing in addition to funding is around, um, you'll notice the two boxes that were not checked on the policy. Uh, goal was funding. And the second is that having, uh, computer science serve as an admissions requirement for higher education. So that's not so much, um, a policy lever as much as a conversation I think we need to have with each of the higher education institutions or groups of institutions to make sure that they're, um, allowing computer science to count as an admission requirement. And then that's another box that, that Connecticut could cross off. So our goal ultimately is to get all nine of the code.org policies, uh, kind of, uh, aligned and, and on board. And then we can join the six other states in the country that have accomplished that goal. Um, but then we want to just keep going from there and making sure that it's not just about checking boxes, but it's truly about bringing that access and opportunity to students. So with that, I will close and I think we'll answer any questions.
I do have some data in case you're interested to, um, about current offerings. Eighty-two percent of the high schools here in Connecticut currently offer computer science. Um, so in terms of access, that is increasing across the district. Looking at the data, there aren't any significant disparities with race, ethnicity, um, except for Hispanic, Latina students. Also, um, enrollment in computer science is based on gender. And, um, the height and the gender status show the biggest gap. So it continues that males are being steered or going more toward computer science than females. So we are aware of this and these are things that we're working on through our professional learning and through our supports with teachers. Um, eighty-nine percent of the high school students here in Connecticut attend a school that offers computer science, but it's only like six percent who are actually taking it. So these are things that we do need to be increasing. My thought. You might find it interesting.
Thank, thank you for that presentation and for the update on where we are. Board members have any questions? All right. Well, it's good to have you here with us. We look forward to further, uh, progress on this, on the plan. And again, getting those numbers, that's where we want to be first, um, for our, our female students. I want to make sure we get this to our Latino and, um, Hispanic students and just increase the number overall. So thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to invite you to come back to the, the table again. Um, we're keeping you busy today. Uh, so item 11C. And I think you're to be joined perhaps by members of the Fairfield team. So we will address the Fairfield, um, Fairfield's plan update. Thank you for your patience. We had a tax attendant here.
Well, hello again.
Hello.
Um, I promised you this the last time you have to see me this morning. Manny is handing out a revised timeline that, uh, we received yesterday afternoon from the Fairfield Public Schools. So thank you, Manny, for doing that. The Fairfield Board of Education is here to meet with the board today and, and hopefully respond to questions that the board members may have regarding persistent racial imbalance at McKinley Elementary School. Uh, Fairfield, uh, representatives of Fairfield came and met with the Legislation and Policy Development Committee back at November 3, 2021 meeting. They were scheduled to remove the committee and, and today, today committee, but it decided that, uh, we would have to extend meet with the full board. And as you know, uh, and Laura can, can, uh, has far more history in this obviously than I do. Um, the Fairfield, uh, Public Schools, specifically McKinley Elementary School, has been racially balanced since, uh, 2007. As a consequence, it has submitted plans that were intended to address that imbalance. Um, most recently, uh, they submitted a plan in 2017, which was additionally approved by the board on September 6, 2017. Unfortunately, since first being designated as racially balanced, with the exception of one year, and that was 2012, when the figure fell to 24.41, which slightly lowered the 25% uh, racial. McKinley has remained in racial imbalance. Uh, initially in 2006, the percentage was 28.74%. And the most recent numbers that we have, uh, are 29.36%, which obviously higher than the initial number and which is in fact, one of the highest annual numbers, uh, since McKinley was first, uh, identified as racially balanced. So back in November, when we represented, came and met with the committee, it was indicated, was requested that they, they come back in April in the spring. Uh, in the interim, uh, Laura Estadio reached out to them after they submit a, a timeline, proposed timeline, which they did, that is attached to the report that was submitted as part of, to US Partier Packet. And as I indicated, and Manny just handed out, uh, the updated by version, there's, there's not that many changes between the, uh, the January, uh, 2022 version and the April 29, 2022 version. But this is a timeline which seeks to lay out the steps that Fairfield has taken since January of this year. And, uh, is proposing to say up to June 30th of 2023, uh, with respect to McKinley ongoing racial imbalance. The culmination of that, that timeline, as you will see, is June 30th, 2023. Uh, board proposed this about the environmental facility usage plan that raises, addresses, excuse me, racial imbalance needs. So, uh, that, that's a thumbnail, um, of where we've been and where we're at. And as I indicated, the, uh, we have representatives here from Fairfield and appreciate them coming up and having, uh, sat here, uh, waiting for this moment. So, uh, I don't know if they would wish to address the board or whether the board has any questions for them to, uh, initiate a discussion.
Sure. We'd love to, to hear from them.
Okay. You go.
Hi. Thank you for having me. I'm Christine McCann. I'm the current Chair of the Fairfield Board of Education. I'm joined by Superintendent Mike Cooney and Jen Jacobson, who's a board member and also the board's legislative liaison, as well as a member of our Hall of Fame Committee. Um, she's been following the workings of this board closely, so I thought it'd be valuable for her to attend. Mr. Azar, our right chair, was with you, um, through the committee back in November. He had a work commitment. So unfortunately, he wasn't able to join us. I just didn't know what to do here. Um, you had the timeline. It's fun to do. And this was your question, committee, when we came here in November. I just wanted to go back to where we were before the pandemic because we weren't moving forward. Um, the board had a goal of really addressing, you have a number of facilities, challenges that we need to address. The racial balance in one area to address. We were also looking at a location for our Turner High School, as well as a location for our Urban Challenge Center. We have two schools in the district which are underutilized. Um, and we're listening on Emily Levin's Elementary Schools District. We are very much a town that likes to name good schools by many towns in Connecticut. Utilization of our elementary schools are really not equivalent. So the board had a goal of, um, really looking, having better utilize our schools, but also the common sense of trying to make all of, let number our elementary schools racially, more racially diverse. We don't view McKinley as a problem. You've heard it before. And I will say again, it is, it's our most diverse school, but it's something that we celebrate because I know we're incredibly proud of. Um, our goal is to really try to create diversity in our other ten elementary schools. Um, preferably without having to, to parent our community very much, um, in terms of our system. So getting back to where we were, literally, I think it was the meeting before the pandemic hit and everything shut down. We had the lone in the room, come to the district, presented a number of strategic plans to move forward. Then COVID. Um, and the landscape, as you all know, has totally changed. We shut down like everybody else in the spring of 2020. It was 2020, 2021, full year. We were hybrid and then brought everybody back in the spring of 2021. We've been in person, thankfully, all year, this year, but like everybody else, um, it has been a struggle to return to pre-COVID, what we consider normal pre-COVID. Our focus is very much in, in, by itself, without casualties and the current casualties. It's getting our kids back in schools, identifying where they are, both from an academic perspective, a social emotional perspective, and meeting those needs. I see. The connotation now, or the present connotation we met in November, that moving forward on the racial imbalance plan was not a top priority. We didn't pick up those strategic, um, plans and get to work in it and we were back in, in person. Um, because we were really quite honestly in front of the district. And that's where our goal has been and where it continues. Um, you know, I listened very carefully to the back presentation earlier about absenteeism and wanting to create welcoming to the community where kids want to be, where they feel less welcome, where families want to be. Our families, they want to be in the community. Um, uh, what, I live on our assembly and invitation, are you willing to come down and see them? I've been, you've probably been there before, but I think it's, it's helpful to understand what that community looks like. Um, so we struggle, as you know, we've been here before. We struggle with wanting to keep the community together, but also bringing diversity around the district. And with the consent of the board, it's committed to that. And we have worked over the last year. We hired a diversity and equity and inclusion coordinator, who would have come into the center of the office and working with us to really look at our data, to look at things like how absenteeism does affect student achievement. Our policy committee has adopted rewritten policies on this. So the board is taking the questions and looking. I'm going to let Jen Jacobson address those questions if you have them. And we're moving forward on addressing the facility side of it. We made a recall that it was a planned part of the work that needs to be done. We have two elementary schools that need to be renovated. We didn't want to do any sort of district-wide redistricting before those schools were done. Old Hill has been completed. Milne Hill is the other elementary school, which is finishing up the renovation hopefully by the end of this school year. So pre-pandemic, we were really looking at possibly, um, you know, reusing the redistricting conversation for the upcoming school year. We are not there at this point. The timeline in front of you shows the steps that we've taken since we met in November. The board has elected to, um, subcontract that with the lone in the room to get updated enrollment projections. There was sort of a lull in Fairfield, where the housing market, thankfully, uh, for our town, had feedback up again. People are coming to town. People are moving between schools. Um, in the town, and somewhat of a surprise, our enrollment, our enrollment numbers were higher than anticipated this school year. Someone had commented from parents of teaching, current kids in the district, you know, from belonging, starting. Some of that might have been from parents of teaching, from kids in the district, you know, from prolonging starting this early year. Some of them might have been from new residents moving into town. We really won't know until we get that report back from the PLAM collaborative formally along this room. So that was the very first thing that we did in January. The board also, you know, very whole play with all the other things that are taking all the boards of education that are going to go right now. We realized that our bandwidth, we're talking about capacity, realized that the board didn't necessarily have the capacity, to take, moving this work forward in this labor and everything else. So we, then through our bylaws, we created a facilities committee who would be looking at our facility utilization, priority before the pandemic. And took up that work, again, looking at utility utilization, even though our, our pre-schoolers as well as trying to create diversity throughout the district. That committee has been formed. Mr. Ace is the Chair, I serve on that committee. We met with our planning director of the town. We're going to talk about why we should create diversity in the other town elementary schools. We appreciate that housing plays a key role in that. There are a lot of development right now happening in Fairfield. Unfortunately, a lot of it still seems to be very susceptible around McKinley Elementary School. We'll have to see how that plays out in terms of our student enrollment rate. Thankfully, there's also some more diverse by having, having other areas of town, but that is very much in the beginning phases. But we did begin the conversation again with town planning and zoning and will be getting more information from them. And that is really where we are over the last few months. We are still waiting to get enrollment projections from PLAM. The facilities committee has begun that work. We have moved the needle forward with a meeting with town planning and zoning. And I'm here for you today really to answer any questions, along with Superintendent Jen Jacobson, as well as really answer any ideas that you might have. That we maybe haven't explored. With that, well, I'm sure there's something to ask.
I will be very, I've got to know my community's situation in Fairfield. I really wanted to highlight, I was like, give a broad review of what is happening in school. I just want to take a minute to talk about McKinley Elementary. If you will look at any rates for achievement data embedded of the eleven elementary schools across Fairfield to the past, at least that day. McKinley Elementary School tends to be towards the bottom of that. We have significant concerns with the issue of that. A lot of that is tied to issues that Fairfield is addressing, really at the forefront. McKinley puts it at the forefront. There are issues around students with disabilities, with background, with high grade condition rates, they're in and out of school. We have a lot of potential concerns with the elementary school as well. It is a school that for at least the past ten years, the school board has allocated additional funding to. They're at the lower student ratio at McKinley. We've responded to these concerns. It's also received Title I funding. We have three Langmuir socials in that school, that school, all of the elementary schools, example, one have two. We also have, excuse me, most, we have, I have a teacher in that school now, I can see it, three, so the EL teachers as well. We lose additional funding to provide support with two days after school and during the day. So there's a lot of resources that the Fairfield Public Schools, Board of Education have allocated to McKinley as a result of those needs. We hired, since you first approved this plan in front of you, we've had a change in building leadership and we've hired a building principal in our fourth year now. When I close with the mayor, COVID has really screwed up my head. But who has really spent, she's a, 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 I think, educator herself. She had a corporate background, university backgrounds to be in for our resiliency with our teachers around and we need those students. So there's a lot happening on the ground with McKinley to address those concerns. So we hear from parents at McKinley. And so I tell you that when, when parents leave our place to feel welcome in Fairfield, they look for a place where, like McKinley. And it's very much the community school, it's very much a neighborhood school. And it, the racial imbalance issue has only increased because of the success of that community supporting one another. So that's one of the challenges to be faced as we go forward. But I do want to, I do want to be clear that we, I think, achievement of that school, where that school needs to grow, where it is not acceptable to any way. And there's work that we are moving forward on aggressive.
I'm going to include an interest in literacy being on board. We are providing an early literacy program this year for the children on reading interventions for students with disability, especially dyslexia. There's seven students in the program now. We are doubling that next year. Hopefully this program will continue to grow. It is held in McKinley. The district requests the district to go to McKinley to participate in this program. We're excited about that and also wanted to invite you now to see that program in action. Is there someone in the committee you want to add in the comments for that? I guess for that, we'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I'll open up to board members first for questions.
I think, you know, one of the things that you mentioned, you're trying to get more diversity in the other schools as opposed to concentrating on McKinley. Is that correct?
I mean, we, we can't necessarily control where, where people live. But in terms of trying to have each of the other generalization schools be more sensitive to issues surrounding diversity, equity, inclusion. District has, as I mentioned, hired a EIA coordinator, a lot of special development around this area has been hired over the last year, year and a half. To better build the capacity at those schools. At a certain point, having those conversations with parents and the school community, still educating, I think, people and really, as I mentioned, trying to reach out to town planning and zoning to express our needs in terms of a this particular issue that would be helpful to diversify housing around town. As the Board of Education, we have so much control over that, but we did communicate that how the town develops does potentially impact student populations in each of our buildings.
I guess you may want to, uh...
Oh, I'm hearing, all right, I've got another, Mr. and, right, Ted Meadows here. Our current plan had our, increasing, increasing our open choice students to a hundred. We were behind in that for a couple of years. Last year, we did increase our number and we are at a hundred open choice students, which is in the plan. But I just also wanted to note that we, you know, look at our elementary schools to see whether it's capacity, you know, there is, has this concern about adding students and potentially needing to hire another full-time employee. So, Dr. Parrish is there with us. Every year, we take a look at where we might be able to, to increase our open choice in elementary schools without necessarily funding a section. And that work is done in the spring and it will be ongoing. And as I said, we're very happy that the board was able to move that forward to get that a hundred student mark for, for next year. This year, we're returning this year and we're planning for it for next year as well. And that's something that we can proactively do for bringing students in.
I guess my suggestion, I don't want to get into the, you may want to, I think you need to talk to Laura about how the, how these things are calculated. They're really calculated on the, the tot, the total minority population in your school district compared to any one of the schools. So diversifying the other schools without doing anything about McKinley is not going to, if I understand it well, it's not going to help you an awful lot. So maybe, which would be helpful for the board to understand. So, you know, maybe Laura and Mike had spent some time with you kind of going over how this, how it's analyzed and how it's presented. And what kind of things you'd have to do to move, or to change the outcome in terms of the, the racial diversity. Does that make sense? I mean, I think you, I, I understand your sincerity in it, in what you're trying to do. I don't know if that would, these guys could help you better than I can. Well, that actually is going to make the difference that you're trying to make in terms of McKinley's numbers.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that. And, you know, the current plan is a power districting as sort of the last step. And, you know, for anyone in Fairfield listening, I mean, I'm not saying that that's off the table. The board was moving forward with that before the pandemic. We had a lot of other needs, the capital needs within the town, defining enrollments in some schools, increasing enrollments in the other, that it may happen for other reasons. But we are also very sensitive of moving students, especially students that, you know, while this academic data may have some concern, are, are happy, are thriving. You know, one, come to school and when they're not coming to school, support is in place both within the, within the community and within the school to help move them forward in a positive, proactive, restorative way. That is where the struggle is. So really want to look at it more as a district approach as opposed to really focusing on, well, I don't have to focus on the community. I, I don't want necessarily have that community alone to run to it. It's just inherently wrong to me that if a student is thriving or, you know, has the support in place, which is, which these students do at McKinley, to potentially take them from the school and put them in another school that maybe not, don't have the support in place. It just seems somewhat counterintuitive to what is, is best for them from an educational, social, emotional standpoint. And that really is, is the priority. But I am, I am one board member on that, but just my own personal opinion on that. I've seen, seen the great work that happens. I've talked to many parents, visited schools and, you know, the love, as mentioned in the last presentation. There's a lot of love in that building. And I think that that, the hard time, you know, moving students out of that school and also finding positive support and love are there in the community in this school, it would be only one. And that's, that's what we're doing within the district and getting support to move forward. I don't know if there's one you want to add?
Hi, the afternoon, Jen Jacobson, I'm the Board of Education on Fairfield. Just a couple of points. I think Christine doing the talking, she's often explained some of our challenges and where we've been moving forward. A couple of key points for your knowledge that you may not be aware of is that when you, before we were working with, we're in that plan. One thing to be aware for your education is that consultants do not project that racial imbalance in their scenarios. So that is something for, that we have had a struggle with, equally or directly the issue, that it's basically an educated guess. They don't take you out past the current year because it's too variable. So it's not the scenario to be able to tell you what it will result in. That's number one. And number two is I, as my own associate, I'm concerned around Title I. That of course, we're activated by the federal party's support and that should any plan, reduce that level of support from the federal government. How would we be able to interact with the effect from the state, the state assistance or what the impact of that would be? So that's the significance on both sides of finding that we receive that of course, and these additional supports that there's no answer for at this time. Should the numbers drop below, we're making it would no longer be a Title I school. So that's in my mind, just a plan though.
Yeah, I guess what I'm suggesting is that, you know, Mike and Laura agreed to that is to have, you know, them come and really meet with your board and go over the, you know, you don't, you don't enjoy coming here all this, you know, many times. I've been here, this is, this is not the first rodeo in terms of this. I also live in Fairfield, so I understand the, the culture of the town. But you're not going to get out of this without understanding what's underneath it in terms of what's got to be done. And, you know, I think having some folks from the state board come and meet with your, with your Board of Education and explain that would be helpful. Because I think what you're trying to do is really in the best interest of each kid as you see it. It's just not going to get you out of this racial imbalance problem by the kind of direction you're going, if I understand what you're saying correctly. And the staff can be better at explaining that than I can. But I think, you know, you, you're doing some things for what you feel is the best interest of the kids. I understand that. But it's, you may not get out of this racial imbalance thing in that direction. And so I think you need to spend some time kind of really understanding the problem or understanding the, the need to comply, to comply with the regulations. What you're doing may not get you there.
Comment was made that, that families, as they come in, will go to, will, will maybe migrate toward McKinley because it actually provides the sort of environment that is acceptable. So my question back to you is actually, well, actually let me comment first, which is, I think the board fully agrees that this is a full district issue, that it isn't just McKinley, that it is Fairfield. And you can't solve this problem without impacting the rest, the rest of your community. I have been here a little less than Bob, but still not my first rodeo. And there's not really anything new to what's being told to us that has already, that hasn't already been said and used as excuses previously. That said, getting back to the welcoming environment that McKinley offers. Please explain to us what you're doing to actually make that same sort of environment a welcoming community to people coming into Fairfield and your other schools.
Thank you. We'd be happy to talk to that. The, this is how I said, in November, we hired our first Board of Director of Diversity and Equity Inclusion. But even before that, we had begun to work with each of our buildings, not only at the elementary, but middle and high schools to raise awareness of the, the way we project ourselves as a community and how it might compare other people's, people moving to Fairfield, certainly our current residents on their perception of our schools, of system in our schools and their responses to the community. So I will say that one of the things that we've looked at is, this is from a, from a, an awareness issue. As we've begun to address the diversification of the, of the population across the town. We've made awareness of, we've made a priority of looking at the cultural awareness of those different holidays, why people take times off. We've had to deal with this issue for a number of years now, but making our staff aware that just recently my students would be out celebrating the environment. Those are the types of things that we've been working on because there is a, there's a blinding sense to a lot of the needs as our students have, student population is changing. It extends beyond the issues around ethnicity as well, because we are also dealing with this. We just, our, our staff goes through a training around issues around LGBTQ plus students. And how they are challenging the needs and perceptions and support that Fairfield Public Schools and in several other districts have provided in the past. And both the legal obligations we hold to those students, but also how we are going to be able to support them. So this is a, this is work that began a couple of years ago. It's work that is going to extend one into the future, but we, and I would say the other piece, I'm very, very, I forgot this piece. We're really rooting these issues around issues of the tenderness ability of student achievement results. So when we look at why students are being successful, we've become very open over the past couple of years in reporting out to the board and to the public segregated data results all on our SBA, PSAT, SAT, our U-Star in district. We break those all out by ethnicity, gender and special education status as well as Chinese. our U-Star in district, to break those all out by ethnicity, uh, gender and, um, special education status, um, as well as Chinese. Um, we want to be transparent in that work in order to identify that we as a district need to grow in identifying where the gaps in learning are occurring and how we and the staff are responsible to fill in this gap. And there's the structural piece that comes with that, but going back to it, there's also the cultural awareness piece that comes with it and how we speak with students, how we support, better support family. And with my, to the, um, the attendance presentation this morning, because we've only just begun to get some of those, uh, to address some of those issues. To fair enough as as hard to figure out where the issue came from. Those are issues that are have been confronting us. And in many of our district, excuse me, in many of our schools, that that issue is hidden because of the overwhelming, uh, um, acceptance or the overall success rate of many of our students. So we have to lift that rock and address that 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 success rate is not for all students. And why isn't it all for our students? And what do we know about correcting that for all students? And and again, that's that's the work that, um, really has just begun in the last few years and will certainly have to continue. Um, we're we're working out to build a, um, the culture really among our staff of questioning, um, and ownership of those results. Because while those are the, those are the, um, the data that we get that tells us we have a problem, we certainly have a lot of anti-behaviors, policies, um, protocols, processes, um, that, uh, that are leading to those.
Thank you for your response. I want to go back to something that Chair Vitale also said, which is, um, talking about just the environment, that it's a happy, loving, you know, school at McKinley, but then willing to set aside the actual academic achievements of of the students. But just to be clear, that's how that came through, right? So you have a school that is predominantly students of color that you decided are okay to be in their own school as long as they are happy, but have underperforming academics. And that's, and that's a problem, right? And so by not making some very hard decisions, I'm not underestimating the 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 difficulty of those decisions. But we continue to be here year after year. My concern about the timeline that you've provided is that it gets us to where we were the last time before the subcommittee, but the last time we were here as a board. And I'm, to be totally honest with you, I have little, if not zero space that decisions are going to be made to make the changes that actually address the problem.
And I I do understand why, you know, we've been here for four years, why I totally appreciate why you would say that way. I want to apologize, but I in no way, that's because there's a loving environment there, that I'm okay with the achievement of that school. Um, as Mr. Cunningham said, we are, there's one reason why we want kids to feel like they belong. We want them to feel like they want to come to school. We want them to feel the love of the building. They have that at McKinley. They also have smaller classrooms. They also have a little literacy academy. They also have bilingual competency of the staff. They also have an after-school, a fore-school and after-school program. We partnered with Wayman Boys and Girls Club to provide, you know, wraparound support to these students. We have district also, um, this budget cycle of community outreach for there for McKinley, homeless and Fairfield Ward track. So we identify students who may need additional support and we follow, work with these families as they loop through the system. So it's somewhat a consolidation of resources backed by the Title I funding that is at McKinley. We don't have these supports, um, across the other ten schools. So with a real system for an academic achievement that is not necessarily going to be better for some of these students who may be English in another second language or need literacy support or are walking to school, they live very close. Many of these students that do a lot of walking to McKinley are able to walk to McKinley. But if they're redistricting, they they may not be able to walk to McKinley. And that throws off the family, the family dynamic. So if all of these other things, um, that are also playing into my own, you know, feelings about this, and I take it, take it to the board, the board's concerns about just moving them to comply with the statute, when we really are looking at what their needs are, building in the support so they can be accessible. And I know that the data may not necessarily support that. As Mr. Cunningham said, if we have to look at all ten of the other elementary schools and addressing, um, the sub-principal eleven elementary school. But we're doing a, we're doing it at McKinley. And there's more support for these students, um, right now than even maybe are coming from another country. Um, you know, if that's English, it's not your second language. And they're getting the support in McKinley right now. The same level of support is not necessarily built into the other ten schools in part because of the funding that's there. Do you have one you had to add to that?
I'll, um, Woody, make the comment next.
Yes, I was looking at your timeline. Uh, I don't see a line like in 2023 that Fairfield is in compliance with the regu- with the regulation. Do you expect to be in compliance at some point? Do you have a goal to be in compliance by a certain point?
I can't give you a set date until I, um, get a better idea of what our our numbers are, our projections for the district and for these schools, just from any, among our, I mean, we'll project it still with racial bounds, but, um, you know, as I mentioned, totally separate from this discussion. The district is having discussions about whether or not we need eleven elementary schools. And, you know, a lot of people, um, that are holding first dreams in our town, think that we that we don't. Um, this town is having a, this first left limited town is, it's just, we can, we can, the first time, I'm not using the name, it's the first time a budget of capital plans in the town. And really looking at, you know, can we afford to do all the things that we need to do? Doing for our schools need renovations. We're moving forward on bringing air conditioning into our elementary schools. We really focus on the air quality. Um, so decisions made in that line of questioning, um, and we're going with our facilities might help, might drive some of the decisions and therefore the ensuing data of of discussion around the district's racial imbalance. And that that did not come out very clearly, but, uh, you know, we might need, we might need to dispose of the school and the district just because of that. Um, that eventually would turn that into balance. And is that going to happen at the end of 2023? Probably not. 2024, maybe. Based on just where we were before the pandemic.
But, I mean, do you have a goal to be in to be in compliance with the regulation at any time in the future?
Yes. And that I I have personally have a goal, whether or not the full board has a goal. Um, I think the people that struggle with putting, uh, the statute in terms of, have problems with the statute. I mean, I mean, probably a problem with the statute. And struggling between meeting the statute that may or may not be the best means for kids and looking at where we are and whether or not we're being, that's the best means for the kids. To say this, I'm, I'm, you.
I'm gonna actually, excuse me, I'm gonna actually let Mr. Cunningham ask a question before you continue to go on record with your statement about, uh, being okay with not being in compliance with the statute. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you out here and let Mr. Cunningham ask an interesting question.
So so thank you for for being here and and I'm one of the ones who endured this as well. Um, and you are right, like, none of this is coming out very clearly to me, Ms. Vitale. And what what is clear to me, based on my interpretation, I may be wrong, is your your tone of defiance. Um, because the bottom line is you're out of compliance, the bottom line. So so if we can speak to ways in which you can be compliant, I would love to hear that.
Ways that we can be compliant, um, through the plan is reducing. That is where we, that is the way that we can be compliant. And, you know, I am moving forward in terms of looking at our facilities and getting this to be compliant. And I I is a priority. I don't want this to be on the line. I would love, believe me, I don't like to connect to, I think our community would like to get this fixed. I think many of them, I'm sorry, it's just the defiance, there is just, I'm going to be honest, they all know that there's a concern about the statute and how it affects our community. And so it's not that I am looking, that I'm not going to be trying to get our district moving forward on this. It's the last thing we're districting. We're putting the the wheels in motion to continue those discussions that that are going to potentially move that. Because I think that we know that that will fix it, looking for other ways that potentially could make it better before we get to that point.
So, um, I I appreciate your your being here and and coming for this presentation. I'm going to tell you that as as chair, this is, um, I had an opportunity to to be with you all in in committee, but have not had as many opportunities with you in the in the full board as some of my colleagues may have had. Um, it is, you know, I I'm sitting here almost needing to check what what date we're in because I I feel like I'm hearing an argument with separate equal being made in front of me. And and I I remember that being struck down quite solidly. Uh, we we are not going to continue to entertain arguments, I think, about, um, about how, um, this segregated school that is underperforming for its kids, um, is is allowing kids to thrive. I mean, we're not, we're, we just can't can't hold that conversation as as a board. Um, and there is a a law and a set of regulations on the books that you have been in non-compliance with for a while. Um, what what I would be interested in in a plan from you is that that right now, this this plan seems to focus around the facilities, the set of facilities conversations that does not seem to be getting to what you are telling us is the heart of the matter, which is, um, that your community has been okay with being out of compliance for for long enough. We are looking for you as leader, as superintendent, as the leader of the Boards of Education to lead your community in the direction of compliance with with what what is fundamentally a civil rights violation that you are in at at this point. We are looking for your leadership around leading through a very, uh, challenging and difficult set of conversations and and work in your town, but that's why you are in the leadership positions you're in, is to keep your eye on the ball, what is the right thing, what is the legal thing, um, what is the compliance thing? I think that's what we're looking for here. I I do note that, you know, that you were clear on record that this has not been a priority for you. We are looking for you to make this, I'm I'm quoting your your words. We are looking for you to make this a priority because you are violating the civil rights of students in 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 the, uh, town of Fairfield right now. We are asking you to make this a priority for the for the students of McKinley, but for the students across all of Fairfield who are not getting the best of education because they are continuing in in education situations that are not giving them access to sitting in classrooms with other kids of different backgrounds, that is what, being taught by educators of different backgrounds, which is what will prepare them for success going going forward. I would encourage you, I I I, um, think that given the the length of time that the community has struggled with this, I would have liked to be to brought on board diversity and equity and inclusion of people, um, sooner. I'm glad to know that somebody is on board now. I would ask that you take this plan back. I I have no idea whether that person was involved in the development of this, but I would think that there is so much more that could be included in the plan. That's really about how you build a community, how you develop your own leadership at the board to lead this, how you build a community will and move forward, and how you make the commitments that go beyond a set of facility studies that are going to bring up to to 2023. Um, so that that would be, um, my my ask of of, um, of Fairfield schools as you as you move forward. Um, and I, uh, thank you for your time today.
May I just respond to one thing that you said, and I just want to, in terms of it not being a priority? In the last, it wasn't absolutely a priority of this board moving into the pandemic. Absolutely a priority, the board adopted the goal to get this behind us. Um, it has just not been the priority over the last year and a half because the priority has been just getting kids, all kids, back in school. Getting our, keeping our schools open, keeping our kids healthy, keeping our staff healthy, getting, you know, teachers in the building, and that's the priority. So I said that not to minimize or to think that it was not okay that we haven't, you know, that we're not moving this forward. It was just over the last, coming out of the trauma that public education itself has been like, we resulted COVID, that it has not been this number one focus on the board, um, agenda prior. Miss, I don't want, I don't want to make you sound like this is not something that we know we have to address or are not committed to address it. It's just with the other things that have happened in the past year and a half, that's where the conflict that was at.
I I heard you, and I would remind you that part of the trauma that communities have gone through over the past couple of years has been the increased focus on the racial inequities in in our country, that that was part of the pandemic that was exposed, um, during the last couple of years. And that that I would ask that this have the same urgency, um, of of other things on your on your agenda.
Uh, can I just follow up a bit, please? Um, in terms of your comment around civil rights ending in violation, I, for those of you who are newer to this board, uh, in the history as well, that in previous years, the community did file a civil rights violation. Um, to set where they are, um, and that being forced to, what is the violation of their civil rights? So I think that there's some greater understanding that community may be able to garnish some of the citizens in McKinley. I think it's upon that opportunity. Um, and to Mr. Cunningham's point on, um, violation of the statute, well, you guys have received everything that you have asked from us. So we have provided the plan, we do have provided the plan. So I mean, I know we were trying to get at in terms of that point, but we're not in violation of providing you with plans and updates as you access to do so. Um, and in terms of the report that you received earlier today, you have three pools on that this year. But that doesn't give you a sense of that majority of the schools that have filled the same description that the chair just spoke to earlier. So there are not only three pools in the state of Connecticut that have a greater than 25% variance, which you are well aware of, and several of them are in New England.
Thank you, I I was responding to what I was listening to.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, I'm sure, uh, right here. Just to respond to that, I I just wanted to know that I I think that that's somewhat reductionist. You say that school applying to be running the racial balance by moving students from that school, rather infusion of other students could also abalance it. And the only reason I mention that is that when Fairfield came before this board in 2017 and asked for approval of the amended plan, that request was predicated in part upon its suggestion that it was going to investigate turning McKinley into a magnet school, which is supposed, or at least predicted, would reduce the percentage by two to three percent. Um, and I also know that as well, because in the April 29, 2002 amended timeline that was just provided yesterday, on February 9th, there were apparently the discussion about optional programming ideas, including potential magnet program. So I'm a little perplexed at the full, like, four and a half years after this was proposed to the board and how this is being discussed. Uh, furthermore, the board does have the power to request an amended plan. So I just wanted my board, um, to take that that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further at this time?
May I just, uh, Chair? Just, uh, I wanted to go back to Superintendent, it's good to see you. Uh, the, you talked about the chronic absence that we just listened to, and I'm, you know, looking at your data. And so the chronic absence rate for this school has probably tripled. And we recognize, uh, from, uh, in 2019, uh, wait a minute, yeah, 2018, 2019, and we know all the things that have happened. So on top of everything else, there is a problem of attendance, uh, at the school. And Laura can certainly connect you, I know my colleagues are here, because that's really important uh, because that impacts performance, that impacts so much more. So we can, as you mentioned, it's a new part path for you that we can, that's what we do, uh, is to try to support you, to really look at strategies, um, that are effective, that we can make sure the kids are there because it is impacting, a certain impact in learning. So I wanted just to make that offer to you to make sure that we're able to have that conversation. So I wanted just to make that offer to you to make sure that we're able to have that conversation. And and I also heard, and I'm processing, the statement about keeping the school's Title One status. Uh, and what does that truly mean in term, you know, what are we really saying? What does that truly mean in keeping the three hundred plus thousand Title One dollars there? So is there motivation motivation to hold on to that? And what does that really mean? I think it's just something to think about, uh, as you message what's here. The last thing, and I appreciate you said that you have an open dialogue with your data uh in the community, because it's really important when we think about our kids, that our families know exactly how the school is performing, uh, comparatively speaking with others, and how their school and their students are performing. So I do hope that that conversation is happening in that school community as well, and so families are fully aware, and is very transparent about the, especially their kids' performance.
Thank you, Chair. I would, I think you would agree that you have to have change unless you you hold the books and and share that everybody is involved in this, where it changes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we're clear about what, if there are any next steps that we're expecting from from Fairfield as we come out of out of this meeting, and I just want to um suggest, uh, as I mentioned, that this board can ask for an amended or an updated plan. Um, I don't want to get stuck in the land of plans because that's what I feel like we've been in for a long time, but I think the point about understanding and working in what is the actual timeline of the set goal that actually articulates that you have intentions of becoming compliant, like of seeing a more built out plan than than the one, really the one feature that we have here for. And I would like to say, I mean, my uh, my interest, my my sense of frustration, um, but relatively, I will just, is saying, once to be able to get more or less um with actually, and go incorporated with that. It's been Fairfield, an amended plan due to us three months. Any discussion? Yes, Mr.?
Three months would take us to the start of next school year. This is what they're starting in three months. Likely to be any kind of invasion in the next year. We've got and the um, and I mine, and worked on and worked on, worked on. You must have a whole set aside. But I would like to that is a for implementation in the you should just apply it.
Your amendment and that we receive is something able to be implemented in the coming school year?
Yes.
Amendment motion? Um, is there a
Second.
That case amendment has been moved in seconded. Um, any discussion on amendment?
Can I, can I, can you?
Before you Say something first.
I I'd welcome the action.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you know, I have and like, I think this is a, is a, we could say that it's a principle to go back to this work. We wish fair and on retirement from Fairfield. We will wait once again on this big board if, when we start another search, interim. So in terms of capacity, um, I'm not sure, and budget, that we would be able to, what you're um, and we would be separate, continuing this work forward in terms of developing and um, have you updates you, you know, for all of us not coming up here, three months or six months. But give us at least another year to, I know it sounded like another excuse for hiring another superintendent, but um, to move the work forward and get the data, we need to understand, we were talking about we don't have to, to even know what that can look like. When you get that work, you do it forward. And I can't deliver something if I don't have the data to move it forward. Being really transparent and honest about our capacity is a little to say someone's getting the data from the board to check. I mean, it's not an action.
If if it can't be done and create a failure, but some point this process has to do something. And that point seems to be I don't know how we it's I've heard on it mostly with a date that is will you be much?
I'm sorry, can I, for the last
I'm sorry.
This is a, to be day, I I can't, if I can't swear one person gives you time to do for education. I know that I, budget just passed, we don't have, have to move forward with this next, absolutely, but next year. Resource purchase is not there. Um, that's just the reality of the situation. Um, and I heard the commission, you know, any of your words about focusing on student achievement, and I was really just we have this, uh, D I, that we just, she is temporarily in here, um, she's been looking at our district, and I would really like to utilize her and from her, get us to see in terms maybe the avenue that we haven't had since, because we didn't necessarily have, after the within the district, offer another solution. Um, especially in terms of the magnet program, we got the early program, and like, what if we have that solely if we build in another school, the state of McKinley, would that be, uh, we're gonna be more children, elementary school, these are the conversations, the questions happening in the upcoming school year, as we build your Could I just ask a question about we, sorry, person, that you just talked, they were recent, what was the charge of that person? And was there a, a goal this person was accomplished? Perhaps that's the person we need to be in the next
The individual has several goals. Um, and one is to, the the primary goal is to raise school awareness, the uh, question, primarily the question was a moment of that as to how we can work on these, um, that person also serves as a resource, um, and network with, um, all the national state agencies, private, private, private research, for our schools, employees, parents, and students. This works in interpreting A F R, looking at the group clauses of what is addressing or causing those uh, you have always been in that, and have the, of issue with both of us, is who, is who our city or and special staff as well as to help better support retention of all our
Well, I'm short, and I tend to emergency issue, and certainly I'm set in a condition to speak for the families of the community, um, of McKinley. But I have, we've several of them, and I'm not just saying that necessarily appreciate, um, in the next few months, having our children move to a new environment um, that isn't necessarily prepared and all to activities or, um, the needs that they have, that we met in McKinley in a very unique way. Um, and not even only the family that we teach, but other, so that there, let's not forget that there are cultural um, components, but I very much of, to this community, and please, McKinley, please to, you know, call me around, you have, I'm Mr. Vennett. Um, they just start, um, they sprinkle that and not even have a good team, and and certainly our, the coordinator, um, is part of that conversation, is part of the conversation when we were interviewing her. I know this whole story about what is the racial balance plan, and our ideas are in Boston that, but it's also related to curriculum access versus our policies, energy lending, and studying all of these areas moving forward. Um, so I understand your perspective, but this is about, um, a lot more home kids, just picking up, yeah, and you can, we'll take anything with me there.
I also tried one time that we moved and chilled, I think we're asking for plans, I think we have plans, I know we I can speak for this board, if we were enough, we'd be able to take children from a school in three months and that's what I you're a current time, but nothing at all. I, I I think, I think you guys know what type of times it is. Yeah, any kind of change, or log it for, log it for you. There's a panic that you're nearing, that's, that's getting close again, it just got our budget cut down, like, say, just re, you know, potentially, that's that's the next thing and that's just not possible for me.
So I think, um, I heard in the question was that, um, he was looking for, correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong, for a plan that could be implemented in the, um, implementing this year to me meant, um, that they were going to in in the new school year, that were about cultural alignment, the the community that was you, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I didn't think that I I, probably subject one whenever, had had kids moved around. I thought it was looking for a plan that was implementable, and could, could lead us forward toward a goal reaching balance.
Stand upon that's all.
This timeline gets, gets I don't what is this, is this timeline getting identified June twenty, yeah, what have, please, and you, and that what, then, and here we would be implement, and I don't, I don't know what this
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we don't have to, I mean, so the strategy of giving, I think that potentially be incorrect. Um, we didn't provide, I think, as we move forward on this, if we're going to get in and have these, you know, and update, and by any balance, we're, if we do hear you, and we want to engage, we haven't, our schools have been closed, we haven't been meeting with the parents, we haven't had the opportunities to bring the parents in, um, we want to have these discussions, all communities in terms of, it not be student achievement. Certainly somewhere, but I don't think we've really been able to, um, you know, fully engage with the parents, the parents the way that we did prior to the pandemic, just because of all the administration strategy that has been in place. And I think here, and I'm not going to put, um, it will be, as to the way that we do so, in terms of being able to connect with people in the same room, face to face, at these kind of, we're, we're, our district's over, so this is our tip.
I'm, I'm a little wrong. I, I think, I think it's more than enough. I I'm guessing our quiz, Superintendent Cummings, that you present for him each year as, as a goal, this objective, I'm, I'm actually actually did have to to lead and deliver off you. I am quite certain that Superintendent Cummings sits with the scheme that that reports to him and lays out goals and objectives of things that are uh, think of it, so a plan that the board that at this point, we have no sense of what your goal stated, and stating the public goal is part of moving us um, there's, at this point, there's no sense of what, by by twenty twenty-five, we want no school officially around by twenty thirty, I have no idea what your I think that's what we're looking for, and then you will be able to put the steps in place to get there. But 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 in some ways, there's got to be, there's got to be a something, just for anything else that maybe was underperforming in your certain, that you set some goal that by by this point, we do that. That's something that is going to be clearly outlined, then get some steps, that's how, how you're going to make that goal.
That, that, that the plan that is right now simply looks at all eggs in the basket. But you yourself have also talked about the whole of the D I, and all the other things that you say that you're trying to do of expanding this welcoming there are others that I'm from that have to be happening in order to get your community at a place to hopefully be able of not being out of balance. That I would want to
We're all in plan, so I'm saying it's, that's maybe not even a racial balance, the board is last group, but both of them are just in a land. Um, you know, all that work would be done regardless of our board's life passion. All the work is being, not just regarded by the time of plan, they have special kids, all kids in our district. That, that's no game. That's our, that's our work, and that's and I don't, I don't, if we hired a D I for, not going to get racial balance because we realized that we had a need, there is an opportunity at, we didn't have, we needed to serve it. But we brought somebody on board that are educating ourselves, that are educating ourselves, that are educating our students. But, you know, when I know that happens in the time right now, you know, it's being hot, it's being hot here, but that's just the time, we just came out of, you know, the two years of not this usual to get, get everybody back on, continue to move this over, I don't know if you intend it, um, we can go down. Yeah, the board had a goal, that I, today, today was to, to go through our position, to meet the racial balance plan, and I think it was by two thousand barrels, and then there was the pandemic, which was two months. It was like, twenty-two, twenty-three years, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, but our goal becomes and in the last, we lost two years. We lost two years, that's what we worked, and right now, we're coming before you, and we didn't gain in the two years, the last two years, we've just been working on it.
So the, so now that you're in, and you have a plan, and so we are looking for a plan that gets us to that we could look at and then and then come, the um, the amendment right now to be brought up station and then coming, coming school year, so, um, first vote I have amendment language, then we'll go back. Amendment language, then we'll go back to the original motion, so amendment had a vote out. Wanted, um, this, this plan to reflect implementation in the coming school year, so everybody clear that that's what we're voting on right now, is that. All, all of it in favor. Uh, Mr. President.
How many of you good looking?
That is true.
I mean. If you think it's on. No.
I, I don't, I don't get the.
But, but. Sorry, son. It's, you just wanna withdraw the amendment, because it's on the table right now?
What I want to be, actually, man and man.
So we're back to the main motion, amendment, back to the main motion, amended, and from Fairfield, um, due to us in three months.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think all this discussion has been about what, what we hope to see in that plan, but the, but the motion on the floor right now is an amended plan due to us in three months.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, we ready for that question? All of it in favor, uh, sorry, I'm ready.
Could I amend that, uh, that the plan should have a goal?
An amended plan, um, with a goal.
Because it was said that they had a goal for twenty twenty-three, and they lost two years.
Was that last time?
So then, maybe it should be twenty twenty-five.
Well, I'll leave it for them to propose, or if they can, you know, if they have had it placed before, they got interrupted, put that into a new calendar. See, see what else, um, needs to be added to that, and that with the additional new staff, people that are able to weigh in on this, get back to it, um, with an amended plan with goals in three months.
That, that includes the, the point of time at which they would be in race, in compliance.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the goal, the goal is the compliance attainment. Okay. Clear what we're voting on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, the motion on the floor is, um, that Fairfield Public Schools come back, comes back to us with an amended plan, that includes the goal date, uh, when they will have achieved compliance, um, and that that is due to us in three months. Okay, all of it in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, thank you, the team, I know Stan's ready to, um, work with you and consult on, on that, as they have all along, um, and we look forward to reviewing that, um, in three months. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should bring up the A C update.
The staff.
We're gonna do this, uh, we only have a, a few items to talk to, and then, uh, Haji, if you could just get ready for the, um, demonstration of insight. Uh, we wanted to let you know where we landed, Maddie, uh, voice for change, uh, you heard, uh, the Central High School talked about that this morning, so Maddie, could you just?
There is, there she is.
She's running, so we tend to do this, keep us fit.
Hi, everybody, good afternoon, this morning, so we announced the fifty-nine winners for Voice for Change and Lieutenant Governor on Friday, April eighth, it was on YouTube Live, we had. A couple hundred live viewers, which were a lot of classrooms, so we can say we probably have thousands of viewers attending, that was very exciting, and with my colleague, Jacob Recidi right now, and the very helpful Kathy Dempsey. We are working through the background E G M S to get that through the system, to get that set up, that we can share the grants in the district, and actually have them apply for the funds, and on the next slide. This is my camera, this is our winners, um, as you know, well over, or just over eighty percent of our winning, um, proposals had to do with social emotional well-being of our students and our staff, but I tried to capture. Um, all of these five state of all priorities here, the first one, we have the vocational certification program, which is one of the Commissioner's Choice Awards, this award has strong support from their schools, college or career pathways team. They're going to fund some of those certification tests and study materials for students to remove that barrier to access, we have a school-wide C D service day and picnic and touring, which is, um, our, I believe, second highest vote, um, voting proportioned schools, who, who are some students voted. And Waterbury, they have some, um, different kinds of discussions, and a peer mentorship program around social emotional well-being, another Commissioner's Choice Award in Putnam was translating earbuds. Um, which has support of some Zattner academic office as well, it's a really awesome cutting-edge technology, and not only can it support students in the classroom, but also families coming for conferences, school events, um, so removing that barrier to access to them.
Excuse me, that's something with the translation built into the earbuds.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're gonna purchase a, a set of them, um, more, more than one pair, so there'll be some to go around for those kinds of events. Um, at Eastcon, one of our reps, and about a middle college, is, this was a very expensive proposal about building a sustainable food system in the community to combat food insecurity. Um, the students very clearly so passionate about this, so I'm really excited that one won for them, and then it's grandy by, close to that, which I will not run over there to do, but there's a proposal that wants to expand their food pantry, and also expand to a backpack program. So that when there's breaks and such, um, kids and families can take, you know, a little backpack home, and this is something they had before COVID, that was disrupted by the pandemic. But those are some samplings of our winning proposals, and they're all on the website, and I hope I've done some too.
No, thank you, Maddie, and Maddie, now feeling questions from others, yes, wanted to find out how we did Voice for Change in Connecticut, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm connecting with the school district in Pennsylvania, that's implemented Students for Change, which they cited as their inspiration, and I'm also meeting on Friday with Ohio, um, who's interested in, you know, what we've learned on a statewide basis, and what might be in store.
Thank you, Maddie.
Thank you.
Maddie, I have a quick question for you, um, as some of these are going on, is, it would be great for the board to be able to see, like, uh, like to ask the schools to do, like, literally an elevator speech, you know, two, three minutes about their program, and actually see them. And come here to do it, maybe it's something we can think of for our night program, but it would be wonderful to sort of see a snapshot of some of the things that happened, and.
Yeah.
Because some of the things are gonna be happening before we actually, you know, before the, the summer, um, you know, maybe let them know, but I think that'd be a wonderful thing for the board.
Yeah, I, I think that would be lovely, and I know the commissioner's definitely expressed wanting to visit when some of these things get up and running, and, you know, as we do, we'll send out the invite to you guys, and so, you know, it's all across the state, but I'm really excited to see these, and I'm definitely gonna be bugging schools for pictures and updates along the way, I'll be sure to share those as well. Go ahead.
It's just, we're pretty excited.
Yeah.
About that, and for, for implementing that for us.
Uh, John?
Just, uh, just to let folks know where we are with health and safety. Hi, good afternoon, update on our health and safety work, uh, as you know, we issued some additional guidance on the twenty-first of April, um, nothing necessarily new, which is reminding school districts about the ability to, um, continue using the mitigation strategies, as we're starting to see numbers take up. Across the state, starting to see, uh, you know, some outbreaks in certain locations, so reminding them of their ability to reduce ventilation, maintaining, um, standard cleaning protocols, um, and then, uh, in particular, um, monitoring for clusters within classrooms, uh, certainly testing, we've issued, as you know, uh, the names of test kits, around the states, of utilization of those test kits, um, for students in S A. Um, and then, and then having a plan for, uh, the events that will be going on during the end of the school year, um, out of calendars, out of school trips, to make sure that they're, they're geared up and ready in case there is someone who tests positive around, being able to, uh, isolate and follow quarantine guidelines, um, additional masks for students, if they have, they don't have masks on those streets, and things like that, um, to limit, uh, any risk of spread. Um, and again, supporting students in S A, we continue to wear masks, most, uh, most school districts have, um, gone to mask, but there are certain students in S A who continue to wish to wear, uh, masks both all the time, or in certain circumstances, and we certainly honor that, um, and wanna make sure that we're supporting those, those families and those students. Um, and if you're sick, stay home, um, if, if, you know, making sure that, uh, regardless of the symptoms, until visiting and verifying with the test, that, that students have to stay home when, and again, um, at, at this time of year, we're also trying to preserve, uh, those important milestones, that's sort of the end of the year, so all those mitigation strategies and all those. And to keep them away from each other when they're sick, um, uh, allow us to be able to, students in S A, to attend us, and families to be able to attend those regulations and proms, and, and other, it's just, so a reminder in every, um, for the, for the supports, so that we can, uh, hit the, uh, continue to hit the, uh, during the end of the school year.
But last time we said, so we can finish strong, uh, and, uh, with that said, I know while we were sitting here today, I think that a school district closed, because they didn't have enough staff, and so it is still an issue that we continue to work with, and, and D P H, and I'm calling it tomorrow, is offering support, if clusters may pop up, to call them, you know, so they, they can help, uh, with mitigation. And you asked, or whether you asked the question, you know, earlier about COVID and what's going on, and I, I didn't do a shout-out there, but we did last month, uh, for public school, then add the yellow vans in, or to administer vaccines, and I think they said they had more than three hundred shot in their arms, still, uh, each, for some adults and, and, and for students, so that is still happening.
Mm-hmm, thank you, listen. Now, um, with the chair, I wanted to ask, now, we do have cases of hepatitis. And, and that's been discussed in, in writing, and, and just so that we're prepared, um, just, just a red light, I mean, it's kind of alarming, but it's, it's, it's a fact, it's a doom, and, uh, how is that coming into Connecticut, and we've had a lot of cases in New York, but what about?
Um, I agree with that, but I will definitely follow.
Oh.
If you know this.
Is that, is that?
I've never heard that either, but the good news is, that our relationship is so strong, I'm sure if I were to come to tell, uh, that if anything happens, we will, we're actually planning an S D E, Commissioner Jassani reached out to me for our staff, with her staff, to get together almost like a summit with both agencies, to be planning forward. Uh, what does this look like, uh, we are planning to hire an epidemiologist here, who will be our own epidemiologist here to advise us, and also we're working on a, to have a relationship with the Yale School of Public Health, so that we could be prepared, so all that's in the works, we're trying to.
All right, I'm always concerned for our kids, you know, we all have, thank you.
Absolutely.
I just have one comment again, through, through you, Adam Chair, uh, to both Commissioner and, and your duty as well, that of course, this Friday is School Lunch Hero Day, where we give thanks for all of the hard work of the very nutritious meals that our, our school lunch booths are doing, and I just wanna give a huge shout-out, and for all. And making sure that our kids, you know, have a, have a nutritious opportunity, have locally grown, groups of vegetables on their plate, on their tray, but again, to thank you again.
Thank you, thank you very much, John, thanks for all of your. Well, I just. But, and it is about our kids.
They didn't learn.
Absolutely.
Thanks, John, uh, the way to be on pictures, you know, um, Debbie, because I was. And Bonnie and I, we were both, uh, part of the team that went to Warberry, uh, last month. Obviously, it's your one, the board, um, and so I think this, um, the academic challenges. The site was there for all of it, and the team has a great sense of, of what the issues are, and they have an action plan to try to take over positive, very positive.
Thank you, Debbie, and the next.
I saw the middle school, and your brand.
Yeah, well, uh.
What's that?
I wasn't that long.
Okay. I was really impressed with what worked, I gotta tell you, they, they are, they are on.
Thank you, uh, we just had a shock. Laura. Oh, and the academy renamed the Youth Department of Education Green Ribbon School, so that's what you've seen there, and the next trick is our model curriculum rollout, really to be there, and our staff, academic office, Deputy Commissioner has facilitated and emcee of the event. Uh, in the next picture, I know for the Educated Diversity Symposium, I did a quick update, could you just? I can't, just, let's see more.
Thank you. Today, we held very first increasing diversity on Coliseum, um, with the acting of Christiana to open their campus, they hosted them along with one hundred and fifty educated rising students from, from eightish. And we totally deployed, I think Regina Hockton, my lead on planning the conference, the students were part of the planning, they facilitated the panel of educators from across those panels, our commissioners, they're had more students, that speaker, they all were, uh, uh, were at the campus Sunday, they had lunch, they had a bag, and, and, and the gifts from, um. Another, with the leadership, um, they don't. Or, they are future leaders, um, at the time of the day for us to think, two of our students, young women, in the mission, English Care Network, both received scholarships. There's, um, from, here's where I, South Star came up with those, our young men, who are going to be freshmen in, uh, at Central Connecticut University, primary, secondary, education.
And I believe one is going through education.
Yes, and we are, we are, all the students, and one last, Connecticut, this time we'll be sending twenty students each year to the National Conference in June. And we will, um, and we were speaking a lot, because, um, press around, right, that it is the press that we are, this time really speaking with it. Thank you, Eric, for what we've.
Thank you very much, exciting thing happening, uh, thank you for all that, okay, I know, uh, it's, I know, uh, it's the egg girl, uh, let me just, uh. They are the front of charge, and, uh, here, cabinet, you know, sure there, uh, so that's what I wanted, so the one last thing, standing between lunch and talk being over, uh, but I wanted, uh, I wanted just to demonstrate, uh, this new evolution, insight, we're really excited about our kids, and you'll just back to you, and that will be the end of our.
Okay. Don't push.
We just want to, uh, uh, like, and all members of the state board, uh, is, I heard you here, the most resilient, state board and. Going, uh, one. You know, yeah, we offer a, a upgrade to the insight, field insight, um, public, all been launched in twenty sixteen, uh, and I have with me members of the team board, and, 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 of course, uh, John, uh, he has been with us from the year beginning, and John is the head of. Uh, and tracking there is Stephanie O'Day, Stephanie is the, the developer for, on, and, and, and you, Stephanie, and, doesn't want, I mean, everybody does a lot of other things, but, but, next to me on this side is Dr. David Alexandro, they also work with the F I T, but those are early indication tools, early warning system, um, other than, and to my, Daniel Bousier. Daniel actually is the architect of, you know, actually, of all, eight of us first, uh, and many, many other, uh, um, that will, today, so I'm thrilled to have, have these excellent, excellent folks to work with, um, but I also wanna acknowledge a member, uh, he was a fourteen members of the team, who no longer, they retired, from S D E, one is, uh, I recently, I recently wrote, Charles Marty. Uh, Chuck was really a lot of the brains behind, where, so he retired in December, and this is not impossible, uh, the entire performance office, in part because, you know, inside what you see is the front, you, but we have to get the data, country, data collection, you know, processing, you know, behind it, folks at I T, and folks, uh, not in I T, who work on this day and day out, um, and there are I T operations, all who set up the server. Both have IT and both, uh, non-IT who work on this day in day out, um, and there are IT operations, all who set up the servers. So, none of this happens about there. Lastly, EIS, they partner this recently. Um, there's an IT consolidation happening that was really help us migrate or what they interface with now. Uh, and then just a long time after eating, they say, you go to the end site, you like to. So, you're getting a, uh, an early preview of this. So, um, so this is the homepage of the student site. The menu on top is pretty much the same as what you're familiar with, uh, you know, all the students, educators, instruction, and. But there are many, many, uh, new things. And, you know, you stand with some high levels, if you, I mentioned this before, or the half of our students, our and students with ID students, you have the the students who are, you're used to recognizing others with English. This is a facility that's actually older, you can track all our students, our minority educator, uh, Spanish can use in sharp, so it's actually one six. So, you see some of some other data on it. But I wanted to assure folks that some of the resources that we like and we love are in the. The report. The one report, for example, is the, uh, port card, super port card. And if you play on the, uh, on the right hand side, you can see port cards, uh, site, and Stephanie will carefully go on the port card site. If you, uh, you have Stephanie, and the state report part gives you a title on the state, you know, it is condition of education that updates about the year. I know I come once a year and do that report. This is, uh, anytime you want to. And it includes, uh, same thing, educators and students, other than expanding students, I mean, you'll notice here the percentage of our student enrollment. You'll notice, I mean, that there's really almost ninety percent students with disabilities. And so, and you see the current happens where it's going up, right, we were, right, and they, absolutely, that's what's happening as a result of the pandemic. You see that. We have also, and if you scroll down, uh, and examine the performance section. You know, what you, uh, are this back report, mobile friendly, you pull it up on your phone, anytime parents, uh, district, whatever, anybody who wants to. Who's doing, you say, go, don't need to really touch any other part of it. You know, we're showing you the state by top, back to the very top, you can tell like this, or a, a school from the menu, you have full list. And you can pick the students who succeed, um, and and at least a lot of the. So, that report is from our old thing, website, that can remain, but let's look at it. The one of the new stuff that we have is educator, I showed this to you, uh, had a board meeting, I think it was over legislature. And this report is now available. What this shows you is, the first chart shows you contract, kind of non-white educators, non-white students. And this is showing you a trend of over, uh, eleven year. That was not happening all the way up, most recent year. Blue is the percentage of color, non-white students. Educators. So, you see that. This is the state on the left hand side of the city. You can click in. On air, and it was, well, the, uh, district, let's click, uh, favorite, uh, we always use that state. And when you share that, it actually does that for you. Now, let's say, let's say for over ten, uh, and, you know, it pulls up a second district, now you can, like, the state, you don't have to even serve the state. There's two, and then wanting to compare how they're doing with other nearby districts, like districts, things like pieces, they have that information. Uh, there are other tabs on the top of this report, you know, the first one shows a map of non-white, uh, percentage of non-white states. Uh, and so this map, now, when you get to a map of, you're gonna get it by, by, uh, in this case, it starts off with eleven, twelve, uh, twenty one. Yeah. And this is showing it for public school districts. But you can, you know, you can hover. It'll show you actually what their status, and it will show you the towns of non-white. Out, you know, district. So, here is a type of visualization that was not available, that is not available. If you click on the chart, you know, you get other data that actually, uh, percentage of the the district. If we click the whole district, and you'll see, uh, in this state, like, uh, ten. So, again, a lot of interactive, a lot of, another report that I'm pointing that, it's pretty, you know, nice. We're gonna, uh, uh, come down to it, and I think, for the university, Stephanie and S U, the university report, they gave you a problem that's been seventy. College one in Yellosport, um, after the shock. That's, and of course, John was in the back, providing all this. So, here, you actually percentage of students. Percentage of students fifteen and above, percentage graduating, that's graduating in six years, five high school graduated class. Graduating five, graduated here, in my, in my, you know, so on. So, you'll notice that the six-year graduation rate is available, college recognition rate. Available classes, eight years or twelve years. So, not only do you have to hover the state, on the right hand side, you have groups, for example, if, like, if you review right meal, the group, you'll notice that. You can actually see how the outcome eligible to review right, there's two of, not knowledge. And again, all of this, there's a ton of interactive, hover, get point, but there, uh, you can take one of these. This one, we don't need, yeah, just to say that there are all those, you said, you can segregate the data and visualize. That's the power, um, platform that we provide. So, she, how do you collect the college? Is that, how some of the actual students are, you know, uh, how the national, very often, I should use a. And by some that we're able to use, and based on when you graduate, actually, hold this on your. Which freshman, you know. So, this, and you say they, uh, but if you, this is a, um, that is for the district, and you pick a district, you have to make it out. If you pick a district, you're also, who's in the district, if they are available, and I have twenty students, and it's a pressure, protection rules that. But if you pick up, you go to schools, you can get to subgroup level information, you know, so that is available. Thanks.
That's a quick question. So, just make sure I'm reading it right. So, if we're looking at the, the fringe lines at the top. So, that's the graduating class of, I mean, high school graduating class, which one? And and what their, um, their four-year graduation.
Four-year.
Yeah, right.
He that, he, uh, by or. Are this, okay, it's somewhere there, then we look at the state, if they graduated years, four years, ten, four years.
And then, just to put a finer point on the N S C, you know, the National District Training House, you know, that, uh, that that's, um, colleges are.
Like, it's, ninety-five is a possible precedent, maybe two and four year, and you're gonna pay, right, including two and four. So, this is a housing, or again, there are some other options, uh, there's a, uh, math there, this town map, that actually, and simulation. Uh, you can, it it doesn't buy towns, you can actually look at, uh, you know, visually look at colleges. Uh, and again, same idea, hover, and all that, and. You can hover over each share point, you know, and if they have students, practice, you know, be, hey, but they have enough non-white, these are the graduating class. Thank you for graduating. So, just a couple more, and, and, uh, late, 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 so we'll, real quick, um, one thing I want to. We, the finding schools, we heard this new thing, we look, you know, you can go to the site now, get. I can make it a little more user friendly, so here we have, this report shows you the two states, and there are two towns on the top. Public schools and and all of the areas of it. And, you know, the structure of education in our state is quite varied in terms of. So, I'll start with the first town we use, public schools. Uh, here you see that are two hundred and one districts and one thousand five hundred and seven public schools and programs. We use the two programs because there's about four hundred and so, and offered by public schools. That could be special education programs, and drop off programs, etc., in primary place enrollment. Uh, I'm gonna start with the rating, so we we show the schools at the front. There's a lot of schools on the right. For example, you select all in this, then you'll see that we have three three hundred, six hundred and twenty nine schools and that. And you see where they're located. You can hover over that point, then you hover over, how do you want that is, that's cool. And if you double click on that, then you get some additional, like, the report, uh, we saw people. You can go to their profile group or to their website. My website, it doesn't do most of them. If their website link is correct in our data, you'll actually. Now, a lot of things, if you want to know what those are, you can double click on that, and it'll actually, the three districts, you can actually, that's it. If you want to know which are the, who's those alliances, programs, you can double click six twenty-nine, and it'll open up. To the front.